Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. Call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all the city council is present, including city administrator Canrath. If anyone, if everyone would join us in the pledge of allegiance, the flag is behind city administrator Canrath. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. There is no items under general tonight. Brings us to item five. Any committee correspondence to council? Councilor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a volunteer piping plover monitor with the Saco Park and Rec Department, I'd like to let residents know that we have had sightings of plovers already this season and would like to remind them that all dogs should be unleashed and under control with their owners at all times from April 1st through September 30th while on the beach. All dogs must be leashed in all public parks and spaces, and they are not allowed in Laurel Hills Cemetery. Saco has a wonderful dog park located on School Street where the dogs can run free, but again, not on the beach or in the public areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McPhail. Any further committee correspondence to council? Moving on to item six, public comments to the administrator Canrath. Have we received any public comment for tonight's meeting?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, open up public comment to members of the public. Members of the public wishing to speak to the council, please use the raise hand function of the Zoom platform or star nine, and you'll be unmuted to speak to council. Barbara Coleman, you've been allowed to unmute. Please go ahead and do so. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to the city council.
Barbara Coleman, 386 Buxton Road, Saco, Maine. I have asked, I sent just prior to this meeting and earlier today to the city administrator to ask to table the financial report that is being presented tonight. There are numerous errors that carry over from this report to other reports that have been presented to the budget book where line items that were not approved by council last year and adopted are being used. And an example is page 15 of the line-by-line detail that you will find in the finance department's budget. You will see that there is only supposed to be 3,007, not 3,000, sorry, $371,922 being spent. To date, we spent $471,264. What is really budgeted is over $2 million in capital projects. And these capital projects are going to be paid for because some of them have been encumbered, and I did not use that number. And these are projects such as, you know, paying off safety, security, compliance, annuals, things like that, that are beyond what needs to be. Since these numbers are all zeros and council went ahead and staff went ahead and spent the money, my question is, why has council not been given the appropriate documentation to approve these appropriations? Anything above $10,000 is supposed to be taken care of. And if you look at your budget book, you will find in another whole section, there's no fiscal year 2021 adopted budget. All you have is the 2021 budget. So both documents are not correct and need to be reviewed. This has been brought four times to several individuals, and this impacts the citizens as it will impact the mill rate because you're incorrect in the numbers that are being put before you, and it will just end up being more of a surplus or a deficit depending on if the numbers are corrected correctly. So please table this and ask that this be reviewed and brought back to the council next week for a true report of where we stand at the end of March because we shouldn't be at 31% of our budget. That is double what we should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. I see no other hands raised for public comment. Moving on to approval of the minutes for March 22nd, 2021. So motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Councilor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Councilor Berman. Discussion on approval of the minutes. Roll call vote on approving the minutes. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy? Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Mr. Mayor, I'll abstain. I was not party to that meeting officially.
Thank you. Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnson?
No.
Motion passes 5-1 with one abstention. Moves on to consent agenda items tonight. That brings us to item nine, action items. First up, we will have item A, a budget update from March 2021. I believe we will get that budget update from finance director Salas. Welcome, finance director Salas. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You'll be presenting the budget update for March 2021.
Yes, just a moment, and I will share my screen. Can you see the summary of general fund expense and revenue?
We can see your screen.
Thank you. Okay, so summary of where we are through the month of March. The undesignated fund balance is currently at $19,035,000. That's 30.97% of the adopted budget. Of course, March was when we received the second half tax bills, and the undesignated fund balance will go down over the next couple of months as expenses continue to come in. But our second half revenue has closed. Moving down into the departmental budgets, generally, any budget that is within 2% of forecasted expenditures, I consider to be on target. So the assessor budgets, capital projects, county tax, insurance, and the school budget are all essentially on target. Digging into specific accounts, as I walk through some of these different departmental budgets, I would like to note that due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the continuance of restrictions on social distancing and travel, most of the departments that are tracking behind are partially tracking behind due to underspends on travel and training lines. We have encouraged those departments that are affected to encumber the funds at the, upon the close of the fiscal year so that departments can make up for this lost year of travel and training. City administration, generally, that's due to the training, which I just mentioned, as well as some utility bills, which will be hitting the expense accounts in April. City clerk continues to track behind largely due to general assistance. General assistance has come in later than anticipated. This is offset by lower than forecasted revenues on the revenue side. Code enforcement now tracking about 3% behind forecast due to several, due to an open position in the department. Communications is 10% behind forecast. There are a couple of software fees that haven't yet hit the expenditure line, as well as an initiative to print the city of Saco newsletter, which was not progressed due to the global pandemic. Contingency tracking 81%. In fact, that department is now over budget for the year, primarily due to higher-than-forecasted tax abatements, as well as some adjustments that have been made on the accounts receivable, balance sheet adjustments. The council line is tracking 7% behind forecast. This is primarily due to, due to some training budgets that have not been expended. The finance department is tracking 8% behind. The council did approve a budget amendment to support the finance department through two planned leaves. We have not yet filled those open positions. Fire and ambulance is tracking 6% behind. This is mostly due to base pay lines. French benefits is tracking 12% ahead. This is primarily due to workers' comp premiums, which are up 60% year-over-year, and finance and HR is working together on a plan to try and get those premiums back in line. Grants and reimbursements have 90,263 expenditures booked year-to-date. Most of this is attributable to the Keep Main Healthy grant, as well as some FEMA reimbursable expenses that are being tracked. Human resources is 8% behind forecast. Again, the wage and salary study, which is a significant portion of the budget, we are progressing that, but we've not yet made the final payments. Information technology is tracking 15% behind forecast. This is due to, again, a couple of software fees that have not yet been expended, as well as some expected end-of-year savings on certain lines. Parks and Recreation is 24% behind forecast. This is due to the reduced recreational programming for the year and is offset by lower-than-anticipated recreational revenues. Planning and Economic Development, 20% behind forecast. Again, several significant initiatives underway, but not yet expended. Police Department is 7% behind forecast. This is due to a couple of openings in the department. Public Works is 10% behind forecast. This was a big year for the Public Works Department, trying to expend the last of the infrastructure bonds issued in 2018, as well as moving into the new Public Works facility, all while juggling reduced staffing because of the COVID-19 pandemic. So just across the, across the board, multiple lines are underspent year-to-date. School budget right on target. The solicitor is 40% ahead of forecast and currently overspent for the year. Future invoices should now be expended out of the contingency account. Supported entities are tracking 3% ahead of forecast. This is because one of the monthly payments to the Dyer Library was double booked in March. We'll be holding back on the May payment to compensate for the additional check that was cut. Tiff transfers are tracking 4% behind. That's a total of $125,147 under budget. This should persist through the end of the year. What happened was council, you know, the Tiff transfers are technically the domain of the city assessor. We put in a placeholder budget based on what we anticipate those Tiff transfers to be, but the final number may include the impact of tax abatements, which was the case this year. That lower-than-anticipated transfer is largely due to tax abatements, and that does help offset the overspend on the contingency side, where those tax abatements were booked as expenses. And then transfers are right on target. Switching over to the revenue side, city assessor, this is our tree growth tax. Some years we get it, some years we don't. It's a surplus revenue of $33,000. Building rentals continue to be behind. These will be behind through the end of the year because the first quarter of rentals were booked in fiscal year 2020. Capital projects, $117,547. This is the transfer on the balance of a capital project that was not going to be expended. The city clerk is tracking 19% behind forecast. Again, this has to do with reimbursements from the state on general assistance items. Code enforcement, 18% ahead of forecast. Project development and construction remains strong, as does the housing market. Communications is tracking 7% ahead of forecast. Cable, cable franchise revenues continue to remain strong and were stronger than anticipated. People did not drop their cable during the, during the pandemic. Finance is 47% ahead of forecast. This is related to the timing of lien notices because lien notices were delayed. Many property owners chose to delay payment of their property taxes, which increased our interest earnings for the year. Fire and ambulance are right on target there. Interest earnings, 80% behind forecast. A little bit of good news, we did get our rebate on our purchase card usage for the year, which came in at $22,000. So normally, the P card interest earnings are a small piece of the interest pie, but this year, because of what's gone on with the interest rates in the repurchase market, that was kind of a nice bump for us. Nevertheless, we're still 80% behind forecast and will likely remain so through the end of the year. Parks and Recreation, 75% behind forecast. So I know the Parks and Recreation director is looking forward to being, from what I recall, about 75% of capacity for the summer camp program. So most of those revenues are brought in during the months of April, May, and June. So we are hoping to see some recovery on the Parks and Recreation revenue side, but it's a very hard year to predict what will happen. Planning and Economic Development, again, we just had a very strong year previous, partially due to double booking certain revenues. And so we've brought the planning economic development revenue forecast down for fiscal year 2022. Police Department is tracking 75% behind forecast. We are working to bill Thornton Academy for their portion of the school resource officer position as well. The other piece of this is the MDEA position, which because of staffing challenges is not currently filled, and we anticipate a certain amount of revenue on an annual basis related to that position. So that's why we're behind. The underperformance on revenues is offset by savings on the expenditure side. Public Works revenues, and this is primarily excise tax, which is intended to cover the cost of road maintenance, 20% ahead of forecast. We did sort of underforecast this for fiscal year 2021, and that correction has been made for the fiscal year 2022 budget. Real and personal property, really right on target, tracking 1% ahead, and that's likely just related to the timing when citizens are choosing to pay their tax bills. Sale of city assets, 1% ahead of forecast, just a little bit above what we had budgeted, and that's the sale of the old Public Works facility, which we're grateful for Denise Clovett, Planning and Economic Development Director, having spearheaded that process. State assistance, 10% ahead of forecast. State revenue sharing has been stronger than anticipated this year. State revenues continue to be stronger than anticipated. It does look like we will continue to have significant revenues from the state into next year. Unallocated, we just have a placeholder amount of $10,000 a year, and we've brought in $15,970 in miscellaneous revenues. And then finally, of course, our use of fund balance. This is, again, just a placeholder in general to help track what our anticipated use of fund balance, but we do not actually book any revenues here. Are there any questions on the March year-to-date update?
Councilor Berman?
Yeah, Director Salas, thank you for that. You mentioned during the expenditures portion that you've encouraged department heads to set aside money for travel and training to remake it up next year. What effect will that have on the total expenses you anticipate?
So travel and training expenses, in terms of the city's overall budget, are a very small percentage. You're looking at, for most departments, between, say, $5,000 and $10,000. Both departments, the smaller city hall departments being, you know, $5,000 or less. So I, I see where we landed in terms of our financial position through the end of March, this being sort of a wise approach and something that the city's unassigned fund balance can tolerate.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any further questions for finance director Salas? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. If we can go back to contingency, how, how long have we been, I guess, utilizing contingency to pay for abatements? My memory serves me correct, we used to have an overlay line. Do we still have that line? Or I guess I'm just confused as to why, you know, abatements are coming out of contingency.
Oh, it depends. Abatements, as far as I can tell, looking at the history of Munis, certainly goes back several years prior to when I started. Overlay was budgeted, but it wasn't, nothing was ever expended against the line, so it just became sort of an additional $100,000 that was being appropriated by council, but not expended every year. So I think in one of the years when we were working to, to close the budget loop, overlay was something that we moved out because that wasn't where things were being expended from. Some municipalities do use overlay to cover tax abatements, and what would happen there is the expense would probably net as a offset to your tax revenue, and then your tax revenue would come in a little bit lower. But since the city assessor assesses a certain tax revenue amount above, your actual performance should end up being very close to, to your budgeted amount. So it's, it's a little bit tricky when you start using the overlay per the assessor for tax abatements in terms of what it looks like on, on these sort of expense and revenue sheets. But it is something that if the council is interested, we could look at sort of what that might mean in terms of budgeting for next year.
Thank you. Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Finance director Salas, thank you for that presentation. Just a couple of general questions. I have some specific questions, but I'm probably gonna, being the new kid on the block, I will catch up with you at some point for some one-on-one conversation. The mention on the contingency of the write-offs on accounts receivable, I'm just curious, in a general sense, I don't necessarily need to know specifics, but what, what does that involve? What accounts receivable are we actually writing off? What types of, of things do we write off?
Certainly. So in the way that the city of Saco and governmental entities are report financials, when we bill a particular customer or developer for an item, a fee, we book that as revenue immediately, and it is reported as revenue on our expense and revenue reports. And then there's an offsetting entry booked to the accounts receivable balance sheet account. Unfortunately, what we identified was that part of the closeout process for our planning and development escrow accounts was double booking planning revenues last year, and that had to do with the charge code that had been used. And this was a longstanding practice. So I've had to unwind some of what was done in the past. But when it turns out that you are not going to actually receive an accounts receivable, you have to do a negative entry into your accounts receivable asset account and offset that with an expenditure entry in an expense account. And for that, the city has used the offshore expense line, offshore and bank fee expense line in the general fund, which is part of that pooled contingency in this report.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you for that. And then you had mentioned on the fringe benefits, the workers' compensation rates obviously are high. You had mentioned some efforts being made to try to reduce that premium, and I'm, I'm assuming part of that is, is related to claims that have been filed. Are we talking about process that would, would result in fewer injuries? Is that kind of what's been worked, being worked on?
So there are a couple of different places we're looking. One of them certainly is injury and mitigating injuries. Another is empowering our safety committee to educate the workforce more closely, implementing some stronger trainings. There's also some best practices in terms of managing lost, lost time claims, which I know Emily Roy, who's acting sort of as an interim HR director, as well as our HR consultant, have been working really hard on coming up with some good solutions. So it's definitely something that we understand is a high priority and are working to get under control from a few different fronts.
Great. Thank you very much. I'll look forward to speaking with you in the future.
Certainly, anytime.
Any further questions for finance director Salas? Finance director Salas, please continue.
That is everything I had on the March update for council.
Thank you. Finance director Salas, were you able to hear during public comment some of the discussion that the public had brought forward?
My apologies. I did join a little bit after 6:30, so I missed that part. Are there any specific questions you'd like me to address now that came out of that public comment?
I'd have to go back to, to review the public comment, but the concern was that the budget book is not actually correct because the finance documents are not correct. And specifically, I think page 15 was referenced in your, your March update, page 15 of your 94-page document. There was concerns about capital expenses where, under the FY 2021 adopted budget, there were zeros in that, meaning the council didn't adopt a budget for that, yet there were expenditures in those line items. So there was some, one of the public comments was our budget books are off, and I'd just like clarification. Are our budget books on track or are they off?
I can confirm for the listening public that our budget books have been thoroughly reviewed and are accurate. On occasion, an expenditure may come out of a budget line that had a zero amount budgeted. that had a zero amount budgeted. And that has to do with adhering to GASB standards for where specific things have to be booked. So, for example, if we look at, and I'm still sharing my screen, if we look at the transfer associated with the capital projects line, you can see that technically, the fiscal year 2021 budget was zero for this amount. This item was actually budgeted under miscellaneous transfers. However, miscellaneous transfers is where transfers are booked between special revenue funds and the general fund. It is required per GASB that we book transfers between capital projects funds and the general fund in capital-specific accounts within the general fund. Therefore, although this transfer was originally budgeted under miscellaneous transfers, it had to be booked under this capital projects transfer revenue grouping. If council would like to correct the adopted budget to match accounting requirements for reporting, we can certainly do that. However, the budgeted amount under miscellaneous transfers does match the actual amount for fiscal year 2021, and so the budget is in balance. So, that's an example of where that might occur.
Thank you, Finance Director Salas, for explaining that and confirming that the budget book is solid.
Absolutely.
Any further questions for Finance Director Salas? Finance Director Salas, thank you very much for your presentation and joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Council, at this time, we're going to move on to Item B, which is budget presentations from supported entities and department budgets. Up first, I believe we're going to hear from the Dyer Library, and we're going to be visited by Executive Director Leslie Rounds. Executive Director Rounds, thank you for joining us. Welcome.
Just a second, please. There I am. Okay. Hello.
Hello. We can see you and hear you.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Administrator Ken Rath, and members of the City Council, and also members of the public. I'm very pleased to meet with you tonight, and I'm going to try to share my screen and open my slideshow here. Hopefully. Share. Just a second. Go to there. Go here. Go to slideshow from the beginning. There. Hopefully that worked.
We can see your screen.
Excellent. So, the Dyer Library has been serving the citizens of Saco ever since Olive Dyer, the widow of Mayor Oliver Dyer, provided a bequest in 1881 for funding for a public library that was to be forever free to the citizens of Saco. The Saco Museum has been serving citizens even longer since 1869, with our staff acting as the historians of Saco and the museum serving as the repository for the artifacts of that history. Our mission is to provide lifelong learning for all, but we strive to do that in the most cost-effective way possible. We were serving impressive numbers of people from the community, both adults and children before last March, and we were experiencing constant increases in the numbers of people we served. And a particular statistic there is at the museum, we served 4,134 students last year before COVID kicked in, which, you know, we were providing local history lessons for them that freed the teachers up to teach other things. And this scene, which is a picture of our Dr. Seuss's birthday party from a couple of years ago, now seems almost unimaginable, right? Almost scary. But it's been a year of change. Last spring, we had to shut down, of course, but when Governor Mills permitted places like retail establishments to reopen on June 1, 2020, we reopened too. Unlike nearly all other libraries in Maine, we didn't limit our customers to curbside service but invited them in to browse for their own materials, just requiring hand sanitizing and masks, and we quarantined all returned materials for 72 hours. This involved a lot of changes, too. Costly plexiglass dividers, masks for staff, and lots of cleaning supplies, and a true leap of faith for those who marshaled through providing friendly customer service in a kind of scary time. The museum reopened too on June 1, quite possibly the only museum in Maine to do so. The summer exhibit celebrated the local art of 19th century Saco and Buxton artist Gibian Bradbury, and that's still up if you'd like to come in and see it. And even with the hybrid model that schools had to adopt, our education manager, Anatole Brown, continued to present history programs, but he created them in electronic format so that children could, if necessary, participate from home. These classes are all available on our website whenever teachers want to tap into them, providing an extra level of flexibility. Anatole also crafted adult education videos that are available 24/7. Children's Room staff provided all kinds of online content to help make up for the lack of classroom visits to the library this year. In continuing our role as the historians of Saco, we find more and more that the news media contact the Saco Museum when they have a history question for a broadcast, just as Jim Keithley of Channel 8 did just last weekend. And these are a couple of the beginnings of those shows. But as I said at the beginning, we make every effort to fill the critical roles that we do at a price that is remarkably reasonable. This slide compares a few numbers from some local area libraries that serve similar populations to Saco. If you were to do the math, in Cape Elizabeth, library spending per capita is $80.11. The library's spending per capita ranges down from there to the next lowest from the bottom, which is Biddeford, at $52.19 per capita. In Saco, we spend $37.04 per resident to support the library and the museum. The next few slides just compare our closest libraries, Kennebunk, Biddeford, Saco, and Scarborough. This is total operating revenue of those libraries, and in our case, the museum. And this is collections expenditures per capita, which, as you can see, is very low at the Dyer Library. And that kind of results in a look like this, exceptionally dated and with little money to try to bring large areas of the collection, especially nonfiction, into the 21st or even the late 20th century. It also leaves our pay per position lagging a little bit behind other libraries. But when it comes to productivity, Dyer outpaces all the rest. And that's how many customers we serve per staff member. I think this productivity reflects two really important points, that we are very fortunate to have an energetic, enthusiastic, and exceptionally friendly staff that makes customers enjoy using their library and museum, and that citizens of Saco truly make use of this resource in a way that shows the great value they place on having these local resources. Clearly, as this slide documents, Saco's children love the library too. That number includes the programming at the museum for children as well as the programming at the library. If I were just to show the library, it would be a little under $15,000. And, I mean, that's, it's practically twice what the other libraries are doing. In this year of dramatic change, we've done our best to keep up with fundraising. Although we couldn't hold our annual yard sale last June, we opened the annual book sale right on time, and since we couldn't do any programming in our meeting rooms, we just left the sale running all year, making over $14,000 this year, one cheap book at a time, and so far about $2,000 better than any other year. Meanwhile, I've kept right on carrying books up to the attic stairs to stock for this summer's coming book sale that'll open in late July, and that means I've got to get rid of all those books before then, which is kind of a challenge. Early last summer, when it became fairly clear that we wouldn't be able to host a traditional fundraising festival of trees, our volunteers and staff decided that Christmas cheer would be critically needed just the same. With the help of Public Works, who hung these lights on some of our big trees, and you can kind of see the strings hanging down there, the festival went on outside in our parking lot. Even Santa put in a socially-distanced appearance. And in that same remarkable spirit of cooperation, Public Works completed a desperately needed repair to the damaged library sewer line one wintery day, and Parks and Rec does a fabulous job of clearing away our leaves and mowing our lawn. We're so grateful for the support of city departments. By keeping that type of work in-house, I know that in the long run, this represents a great savings to taxpayers. But one of the notable downsides to having an easy-to-swallow budget is that when things break in our two historic buildings, there isn't any wiggle room for repairs or even sometimes for upkeep. We have to do the best we can, but it's a constant challenge to figure out what we can afford to fix now and what ought to be bumped down the, hopefully, down the road, hopefully just to the next fiscal year, when there might be enough money to fund it, if nothing terribly unexpected breaks instead. That leaves us with a major leak in the nonfiction area when it rains hard, and another one in the front of the fiction stacks where water drips down out of the ceiling and lands in a wastepaper basket. We need to find the money to paint the window sashes at the museum, and there are a couple of significant leaks in the museum basement. But we are fortunate to have a new maintenance person, and he's going to do our windows for us. So, that's going to keep that down just to the cost of paint. Public Works was nice enough to come out last spring and replace a really crumbling area of the parking lot, which you can kind of see the lines of where they cut it away and repaved it. And that parking lot is a place that a lot of people regard as a high-speed cut-through to avoid the traffic light at the corner of Main and Beach Streets. Unfortunately, now the lot is starting to crumble just beyond the repair, as you can see, and there are also potholes, which Public Works has repaired for us, but which are kind of coming up again now at both entrances to the lot. But that does have the kind of benefit of slowing people down when they're going to cut through. We also have, the sidewalk to the children's room has developed this enormous crack, even though the walk is not that old, and I think that's caused by tree root damage from the ash trees behind the library. Last summer, our knitting group, seen here from just before COVID, packed up and met socially-distanced outside until the weather became just too cold to bear. I know they're looking forward to resuming their outdoor meetings soon, and with any luck, by midsummer, this is what the Dyer Library will once again look like. When I think of the Dyer Library and Saco Museum, I feel so strongly that we in the city work hand-in-hand to provide exceptional services at a reasonable price. I will never come to you and ask you to fund us at the level of some other local libraries, but at some coming point, we are going to need to have to include better funding for repairs and maintenance, and I'm committed to seeing that our staff receive pay raises that are comparable to city staff. Our funding request for this year includes money for a very modest 1.5% cost-of-living increase. However, according to the Consumer Price Index, costs have actually gone up 2.9% in the last 12 months. I did not know when I began my budget process what the city cost-of-living increase would look like, but if city employees will receive a greater than 1.5% COLA, I ask that you extend that increase to the DLA staff as well. We promise you that we will always do our best to support your mission as well as ours. I know that you recognize the value of our local library and museum and are committed to keeping the Dyer Library Association well enough funded that we can continue to provide the exemplary services Saco citizens have come to expect. We remain so grateful for your support and look forward to a bright future working together. And that's it.
Thank you, Director Rounds, for your presentation. Any questions for Director Rounds? Counselor Berman and Counselor McPhail. Counselor Berman?
Thanks, Director Rounds. A great presentation. I want to follow up on the leaks into your collections. Is your maintenance person able to address those? And are they worsening? What's the status of that?
Well, two different issues entirely. The issue in the nonfiction stacks, that, I don't know if you're familiar with the library, both our levels of, both our front stacks and our back stacks, the lower level is kind of like essentially in the cellar. And the back one, I suspect what we really need is some kind of a sump pump, but that's not going to be easy to do because we have to find a place to send that water. It's kind of like a big deal, and I know he can't manage that. And the front one is a fairly new leak, and I think it's a combination of a hole in the rubber roof that they're coming out to repair, and I think it's also coming in through the bricks in the front of the building because it only does it when the wind blows from the west. So, when we have a hard rain and a west wind, then we know where to put the garbage can. So, he'll be able to fix the ceiling, but I'm trying to find somebody to re-point the bricks.
And are these part of your budget request this year or is this coming in a future year?
No, these are kind of like, we're going to squeeze it in somewhere. Bigger things that are not part of our budget request are things like the parking lot.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Counselor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just personally would like to thank Leslie and her staff. Based on last year, they have all done an amazing job, gone above and beyond to continue providing the services to our residents. And I personally have received many phone calls as the liaison to the library, providing updates, and everybody has just been very happy, and it's almost been a saving grace for some people to at least, even if it's for 20 minutes, to have a place to go with the kids and just get away for a few moments. So, thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, Counselor McPhail. I've got to say that my staff hear that so often from the customers. And the thing they hear second most often is, why can't we make MacArthur Library real? But don't repeat that. But we get a lot of that question.
Any other questions for Director Rounds? Director Rounds, I see no other questions. Thank you for joining us this evening, and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you so much for listening. Good night.
Have a great evening.
You too.
Council, up next, we will hear from B2 Saco Main Street, and I believe we will be hearing from Executive Director Rob Biggs. Executive Director Biggs, thank you for joining us. Welcome. Executive Director Biggs, you're muted if you're trying to speak.
You know, it's not a good Zoom meeting if somebody doesn't start off with a mute. It's either that or the dog barking in the background. Anyways, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, City Council, with a special welcome from Saco Main Street to New Ward 5 Counselor Phil Hatch. Look forward to working with you, Phil, in the future, as we have in the past with Rotary, also city staff and members of the public. And I do want to throw out a thank you to Leslie for what her staff did during the pandemic. It helped my wife get through this process, certainly with plenty of books that she borrowed on a regular basis. So, what I want to do is start out, I'm going to share my screen if I can, and we'll go here, and we'll go here. Are we good?
We can see your screen.
She had on the wrong screen to start, so let me go back here. All right. So, what we've got here, and I'm going to minimize mine, is 2020 in Review. So, my presentation this year is when life gives you lemons, you make some kind of fruity juice. So, it was time to pivot. We realized, I can remember actually talking to Holly Gordon in our office in February, talking about the pandemic and thinking, my God, the art festival is not until the end of June. We'll be fine by then. Obviously, that did not work out that way. So, to start out, just want to review our mission, which is to grow a vibrant and inviting city by encouraging innovation and economic development. We spearhead collaborative efforts to support our businesses and diversify the economy, stimulate tourism, and tell Saco's story. Want to start out with meeting the team. I mentioned Holly Gordon. Obviously, I'm Rob Biggs, the executive director. Holly Gordon is a very small, part-time program coordinator that we get 12 to 15 hours, and you've probably seen her many times in her smiling face at our events in our downtown in the past. And our newest individual, who actually does not start until tomorrow, is Molly Donlin, the program director. What's going on here is Rob Biggs will be retiring at the end of the year from my position, and it's the intent of the board that Molly Donlin will take that position. She was chosen from several candidates that we had and reviewed through quite a long process, which included a video that was submitted by each of the candidates to talk about why they wanted to be the program director for Saco Main Street, and Molly did an incredible job, which maybe one day you'll all see. She did a dance video on Main Street singing to the tune of YMCA with new She did a dance video on Main Street singing to the tune of YMCA with new words written for Saco Main Street. It was a lot of fun and I think that you will all enjoy her when you get to meet her in the very near future. So 2020, wow. A lot of words that we had to learn. Zoom, washing our hands certainly on a regular basis. Social distancing was something that we'd never heard about before. Masks have now become a, a fashion statement, not just something that's worn in an OR. And vaccines have been now coming out on a regular basis. So let's start out with some highlights. The Saco Scoop won an award this year from the Maine Downtown Center and the Maine Development Foundation as Project of the Year. They, they awarded this to us because of our, what we've done with our downtown scoop location, helping ignite some excitement in our downtown, working with job development and workforce development with our young teenagers from, from Thornton Academy and other schools in the area. And obviously just bringing a lot of smiles to our folks in our downtown area. Some programs that we had, obviously, as we all know, there were no events in our downtown. So we had to kind of work on things to keep a little life in the downtown and keep the heartbeat of our downtown going. One were some pandemic signs. We'll highlight our flags on Main Street. Instead of asking for donations this year, we dug deep into our own budget and came up with the money to keep that going as well as our planter program. So the social distancing signs was an idea that we popped up with just to kind of use a little bit of humor to kind of teach folks about the six feet apart, which was something new. Or as I saw on a Facebook post one time where it said CDC says stay six feet apart and Mayors say, whoa, that's kind of close. Moving on, our flags on Main Street went up where we display 48 US and Maine flags along our Main Street. Our banners went up as usual, thanks to Public Works. And our planters were populated with some beautiful flowers, which did bring some color to our somewhat quiet downtown this year. 2020 highlights. So with the lack of events, we had to do something. As you know, others have said, we had to bring a little bit of smiles to our downtown. So we started out with, the first thing that we were able to come up with was Scarecrows on Parade instead of our Pumpkin Harvest Festival. It proved out to be quite a, quite a popular event. We had, I think, 25 to 30 scarecrows that came out of Young School alone. There were citizens that did them, church groups that did them. We did some, businesses did. And we met with a lot of different new people that had never done something with Saco Main Street before. And they were on display the month of October. From then, we did Shop Small Saturday in a socially distanced manner. Instead of making it all one Saturday, we had 12 days that folks could use our $5 gift cards that were donated by second, what I would call secondary businesses or sponsors, firms like law firms and insurance companies and, and groups like that versus the non-traditional sponsors that have worked with us in the past. We passed out over $1,500 worth of these gift cards, which were used throughout our downtown in the month of November and early first part of December. And then finally, we came to Light It Up Saco. Christmas was not going to be the same without our light parade or our visit with Santa at the train station with the crafts and all the ongoing activities on Main Street. So what we decided to do was really ramp up the lights in Saco, which have been a little dim for the holiday season in the past. We relamped with over 3,000 light bulbs in our, our snowflakes that we've had in the past. We also added 16,000 LED lights to our lamp poles with some volunteers helping us put those up to create quite a display that I think really helped give a little life to our downtown this, this year. And then on top of that, letters to Santa. Again, not having, not being able to deal and meet with Santa, we had to do something. So we put a mailbox in the scoop for kids to come in, drop their letters off to Santa. And I personally answered 226 letters to kids that were personalized because most of their parents, as they were asked to do, put in clues about the child's teacher, their dog's name, their sister's name, favorite hobby, whatever it was. And so every night I sat here and wrote 25 or 30 of those suckers and we got them out. And we had a lot of great responses from the recipients as well as watching the kids put the letters into the box was a lot of fun. And it was certainly something that helped our holiday. And that's me on the left there. So on top of that, I wanted to talk about, whoops, excuse me, one slide back. Our facade improvement program. So we've been working with the city and elected officials. Economic Development has a facade improvement program, which is funded by our TIF. We have two folks that have applied for it. One will be the State Farm Office of Pegpulin. And the other will be the, the facade in the front of the Atkinson Building to redo their door frames and doorways and some painting and some other improvements to that building. We worked with Parks and Rec in their meal distribution program. We raised about four to be somewhere between four and five, or four and $5,000. And we were there every single week in the rain, the cold, the sun, the heat. And we saw prior to masks, we saw lots of smiles. And as they say, even with masks, you can see a smile anyway. And we served lots of happy people. It was a great program. It was a great partnership with Parks and Rec. Amelia Meyer and Ryan Summers and their staff did a great job with that. And it really has proved out to be quite a nice, nice program. My dream has finally come true. We have an art commission that's got some legs under it now at this point. And working with them, trying to identify areas, not just in downtown, but other areas of town that we can ultimately have more public art to grace our city. With downtown TIF funds, we've been able to do some great things, including helping with our lighting. This year, we're going to see some new things such as some additional planters coming into our downtown. Some new banners will go up. The ones we have currently are 17 years old and they're getting a little bit tired and tattered. So that'll be some lovely things as well. This year, just because of the way COVID has been, we've had intentional meetings. We've had biweekly meetings, both with Economic Development Department as well as separate biweekly meetings with city administrator, thus improving our communication on what's going on downtown, what's going on with the city and areas that we can help. So direct business activities. Due to the pandemic, our normal types of activities with businesses have changed. So we help them quite a lot and work with many of them on helping them get loans, the PPP grants, other areas of promotion that we could help them with and just general emotional support. It's been an interesting year, certainly. We've had to do some different things downtown. One was outdoor dining. We, we helped with some temporary ordinance changes in the Jersey barriers that popped up in Pepperell Square, which greatly helped those two businesses, which unfortunately could not have outdoor dining because of their smaller sidewalks there, as we, you did see within, in front of the, the Golden Rooster. But the Jersey barriers helped them a lot. It helped them get through this summer. And it's been a good thing. So in talking to many of the other Main Street programs in Maine, there's in many cases, there were negative losses of numbers of businesses in their downtown. Unlike Saco. Saco actually had a very increase, a good increase of businesses in our downtown with six currently open, open that opened during the pandemic. Two of them restaurants. I mean, how many people saw restaurants opening during a pandemic? We've got a great barber shop that I've been using lately. Mia Sorrello Studio, which is a, is home decor and upscaled furniture. All have opened up. Sugar Mama's Main behind the Saco Scoop has opened up. Mainstream Realty has been founded and opened their business in our downtown because of the excitement and what they felt Saco was bringing to the table in our downtown. Vintage Shabby Beach is another home decor just on the edge of Pepperell Square. And finally, coming soon, Sweet Sunrise will be a bakery opening in Pepperell Square sometime after May 10th, probably around May 15th. And Taco Trio, which is a restaurant out of Portland, excuse me, South Portland, is opening their second location in Saco where the former Skipper's was. And that should be sometime in late May as of their last update to me. So fun in Saco. This was not last year. This is just a reminder of what we did have in the past and hopefully in the future will have again. We are planning this year like it's 19, excuse me, 2019, with the exception of the fact that we will be following CDC guidelines and the mayor's regulations. And we're going to adapt as we, as we have to. Starting out with Bark in the Park, June 5th. The annual Sidewalk Art Festival. We're about 70% sold out already and we will spread them out significantly and we will be adapting again to the main CDC guidelines. We're going to spread out into the parking lot behind Gorham Bike as well to give lots of socially distanced space. Music in the parking lot. I don't know if you've been there before, but there's lots of room in the parking lot. Everybody seems to cram themselves into the grass by the museum. Our plan is to spread everybody out and socially distance. But again, July 8th is an awful long way away. With vaccines coming, I think that we're going to see not maybe a return to normalcy, but certainly it'll be much better than it has been. Classic Car Show will be in July, the last weekend in July. Again, what we're going to do, we're going to make some changes. And maybe this year, we've talked a little bit about shutting down Main Street instead of keeping it open as we have in the past to allow more room for folks to spread out and enjoy themselves, hopefully on a sunny day. The Scarecrows on Parade will, will happen again just due to the fact that it was so popular last time. And the Pumpkin Harvest Festival, that's going to take a lot of work. We're going to have to be very innovative with that. In the past, it's been a great event, but it puts a lot of people in a tight space. And we're going to have to look a lot different this year, certainly. Holiday Festival and Light Parade. We'll see how that one works. I think that a light parade will definitely go on. The festival may again look somewhat different than it has in the past and we will continue Letters from Santa. And I'm anticipating that we will have a lot more than we did in the past. What's ahead for downtown 2021? I mentioned earlier, alluded to, again, trying to continue increasing our vibrancy and our heartbeat in our downtown with a new banner program. We're going to increase the floral planter program. Flags on Main Street will come back. And then even more Light It Up Saco as we're going to add some additional lighting this year to kind of spruce it up even more so. Working with our business community, we had our first on April 6th, Main Street Matters. It was a Zoom meeting. We had 24 participants. We're going to have another one the first Tuesday of next month as well. We have, it's a very lively 30 minute session. Folks are introducing their businesses to each other. We're trying to build more of a community feel for our downtown businesses. And we're going to try to have a subject matter expert, in this case, next month will be Jim LaBelle of The Chamber, talking about what they've done over the last year and what they're going to do as well. We're trying to keep our downtown just a little bit closer with regards to our business, businesses knowing each other and how we can help support each other. We want to complete our downtown. There's a couple of openings still and we're trying to get those to be filled up. Again, mentioned the facade improvement program. That's open to anyone in our downtown. What we, what the city is doing out of TIF funds is matching dollar for dollar up to $15,000 for any project that helps improve the front and the exterior of the building in our downtown, actually across Saco. And then economic development, marketing, we're going to work with the city a little bit more on that. Just trying to get the message out, why Saco, both from a perspective of why residents want to move here, which we've had quite a few new ones coming into town as well as new businesses. And finally, our Shop Small Saturday will continue in November, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. So I want to thank you for your partnership and support and ask if there are any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you, Executive Director Biggs. Any questions? Consul Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Director Biggs, for, for all the work that your team does. That was a fantastic presentation. This is my first budget season, so I'm not sure if you're the right person to direct this question to. But I'm trying to follow your budget in the budget book and I'm having a little difficulty. It looks like you were supported under supported entities in, in prior years, but maybe have a zero line this year. And it looks like there are TIF funds allocated to Saco Main Street this year. And I wonder if you can just clarify for me what the city contribution to your budget is, how that relates to previous years? And if you know where that's coming from?
Yeah, so in, in past years, when I started six years ago, money came directly from the general fund. And it, it did have effect certainly, albeit extremely small, it had an effect on the mill rate. So with the advent of the downtown TIF, the money comes for that, from that, therefore we do not affect in any way the, the the mill rate of Saco and, and our real estate. Now, as far as why it's zero in that, in the city budget, I don't know. You'd have to ask Director Solis about that one specifically as to how she books it or whatever in that respect. But we do come out of the TIF fund and that's been the last, this will be the third year coming out of the TIF fund and it's committed to five years at this point. So therefore two more after this. And then obviously we'll continue on from there in some fashion.
That's great. And how, how does this year's funding compare to last year's request, you know?
It stayed, it stayed the same for the last three years.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any further questions for Director Biggs? Director Biggs, I don't see any further hands up. So thank you very much for the presentation and thank you for joining us.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Up next, Consul will be looking at Supported Entity Number Three, B-Sub Transit for Bitterford Saco Old Orchard Beach Transit. I think we're going to be joined by Director Pendleton. Director Pendleton, welcome. Thank you for joining us. We can see your screen.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Good evening, everyone. I am pinch hitting tonight, given the fact that our executive director has moved on and there is a search going on. And so I'll do my best to walk you through this and answer any questions you might have. So as you can imagine, ridership took a hit, just like everybody's business did. Our ridership is down at least 50% from pre-pandemic levels. That means, of course, fares and fare-related revenue recovery is down at least 50% as well. We, we worked really hard to try to not hit a lot of the businesses who we knew were struggling. And, you know, especially around ad, advertising and things like that. We were lucky. The CARES Act provided a lot of money for transportation in Maine. And PAX Group out of Portland has been doing a really good job of managing it and making sure that we have enough money to last through 2022 without any, any further of the latest American Recovery Act. We made a decision that, given the fact that the pandemic was going to hit the communities hard, we had been part of a three-year agreement where we would be given $35,000 additional last year. We decided to work with the city and, and not take that money and just kind of let it, let it ride for a year. We're doing a lot of evaluating right now. We, we see ridership trickle back. Every time there's a really nice day, more and more people get out. We have worked really hard to let people know that we are doing everything, disinfecting, cleaning, cleaning in between trips, making sure everybody's following the rules. And it's still tough trying to get people to come back and ride the bus. And so, you know, the proposal is for an increase in our local match. We do use that to significantly find more money and increase our revenues from state and federal agencies. As you can see, some of the ridership numbers, we we're at a high of 366. we're at a high of three sixty-six, three hundred sixty-six thousand. Um, we were dropped about twenty-seven percent and we're still working on numbers now, but you can be rest assured that unless something major happens, we will have less ridership, especially on our Zoom buses, even though we got two brand-new buses and they look sharp and they're, you know, first class. No one's going back to work in Portland and the people that, you know, we do have some people at Maine Med. I've written a contract to um Maine, not, not Maine Health, but uh Mercy Hospital and trying to get people that have to go to work and have gone to work throughout the pandemic, trying to get them uh onboard our buses. And so um, on the right, it shows the request that we've have for three years and a couple of the other cities and what the, what those cities pay. Um, we have incurred a few expenses. We have brought the bus system into the twenty-first century and uh, we worked a really strong deal with US Cellular. We have Wi-Fi onboard. Um, it runs our automatic fare system and our automated vehicle locator system. You now can have an app on your phone and um the automatic vehicle locator pings our buses every five seconds, so it's real time. You can see where the bus is. You know, we have some significant uh health insurance increases this year. We had an increase in payroll. Um, our bus drivers, we try to keep them competitive with schools and other agencies and um, people in the private sector. And then uh, you know, unfortunately, there was a conversation around uh forming a union and that costs a little bit of legal fees to make sure that we as uh management handled it correctly. Uh, so we launched the electronic fare system called Dirigo on October first. It actually, as far as software things go, we've had a handful of hiccups, but it's been absolutely great. Um, you can use a Dirigo card, a smart card, or you can have a uh app on your phone. And we work with South Portland and Portland Metro and you can ride all three systems with the same fare and same system. Um, it's, it's been a great project. Um, as I said before, we got two new Zoom, uh Zoom coaches. They are currently operating. They go back and forth on the main turnpike. We did bring one of them. We made a, we made a change and uh we brought one of them to the uh Saco Transportation Center. And it is our belief that as soon as people get vaccinated and people start going back to work, that there will be a population within the mill system, in the mill works um that will likely ride our bus. Um, I personally have handed out seven hundred and fifty brochures throughout the mills, um, getting ready to do um Lincoln Mill and, and a couple of uh Nathan Zantin's projects over in Bitterford. But we, we think if we get the word out, we will get some more ridership. Uh, we were really hoping to get a first of our eight new trolleys this past week, but there was a delay. We're keeping our fingers crossed. It might come next week. Um, but we were able to get the funding for these trolleys at no, no additional expense to any of our own municipalities. The state came through with the match funds that we needed and the federal government um gave us a grant for the rest. So this is going to replace eight twenty-plus-year-old trolleys. Uh, as you can imagine, the cost of keeping those trolleys running and actually finding parts for twenty-year-old trolleys was getting to be uh like pulling a rabbit out of your hat. Um, this fall, we're on uh, we're looking at getting two of the first four electric buses in Maine. Um, we are in a um big grant with Portland Metro and uh we are hoping through another grant on uh that we will get the, enough funding to build a remote charging unit at the Saco Transportation Center. We will have one overnight charging unit at our facility in uh Bitterford and this one will uh charge buses in between trips. And so we think that, you know, this is going to be the, the beginnings of a new direction for us. And uh, we will be getting to launch a downtown circulator, which will be one of our brand-new trolleys. And this will go from the Saco Transportation Center, turn right and go through Main Street Bitterford, uh, turn onto Lincoln, turn onto Elm and go up past Rennie's uh on Scammon Street, take a right on the north, take a right on the Main Street Saco and back to the Saco Transportation Center. It'll be about a fifteen-minute ride and uh that's looking very promising. So we're asking for an increase of thirty-five thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-two and it will adjust the current municipal support from one sixty-five to two hundred thousand. And uh, one of the things to keep in mind is that the, the money that we get from the municipalities really is leveraged to get us a significant amount of money um through the state and federal government. And so the more we can raise um advertising and things like that, you know, that all goes towards helping us leverage more money. And uh, again, you know, it's a, it's a toss-up whether or not we'll see uh fare and fare-related recovery happen soon, but you know, we are, we are very hopeful that as we continue to work on our routes, as we continue to upgrade our equipment and uh people will see us as a valuable resource. So um, the one thing I didn't add, because this was a presentation that Tony had put together. Back when I was in the chamber, I uh, I was very interested in workforce transportation. We had a route that went through the uh Saco Industrial Park and between COVID and some funding problems, we had to stop it. And so um, in mid-May, we have worked really hard and we are going to adopt um and enhance our blue and white line, which runs through Saco down into Old Orchard. And we will come back and we will service the Saco Industrial Park in two different directions. One, one route will go in the morning and go uh up North Street through the industrial park out to Route One, take a right on to Route One and go back on its regular route down um the Ocean Park Road. And then um, that, that route switches and comes, goes a different way. And on the way back, the second time, it will take a right on the Main Street um, left into the industrial park and service the industrial park all the way out to North Street again. So over the next couple of weeks, I'll be going out and introducing this back into the industrial park and letting the business owners know that we will be providing this service again. We have had a few, more than a few phone calls. Um, it is a major source of hiring. Uh, people have difficulty getting to work and if we can provide a service that will get people to work, that's going to be great. Um, I think that's about it unless uh there are some questions.
Director Pendleton, thank you very much for the presentation. Any questions at this time for Director Pendleton? Director Pendleton, I don't see any hands raised. Uh, so again, thank you for your presentation and thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. That brings us to B four, which is back into department uh, department budget presentations and I believe we're going to receive a uh, an update from Communications Director Emily Roy. Director Roy, thank you and welcome.
Thank you. I um, I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about communications, human resources, wellness and fringe benefits. So let me share my screen. Of course, it's not working now. We had to come up with a strategy earlier to uh get the screen share to work. So just one moment.
Your, your screen is being shared. We can see it.
Okay, let's see. All right. The communications department has a team of two employees who manage media relations, external communications, publish the city's external and internal newsletters, manage Saco TV and the Cable Committee, create and publish content for the website and manage the city's social media pages. Andrew and I support each municipal department and several supported entities for their communications planning, messaging, photography and videography and other communication support. Since last year's budget report, the communications department has produced forty-four videos, which is an increase of more than a hundred percent and taken thirty-one thousand five hundred and thirty-five photos showcasing municipal departments and the high quality of life offered here in Saco. When the pandemic hit, Andrew really stepped up to the challenge of launching virtual council meetings. Since then, Andrew has provided support for ninety-six digital public meetings. Thank you to Andrew for your efforts hosting various Zoom board and committee meetings over the last year. The Saco TV YouTube channel continues to grow with almost a hundred thousand impressions, more than eleven thousand views and seven hundred and fifteen hours of watch time in the last year. We also manage the City of Saco Government and Saco, Saco Police Department's social media channels. And just between January first, twenty twenty-one and March tenth, the city government page reached more than a hundred and fifty thousand people on Facebook. The city's website is at ninety-six point eight percent for our quality assurance rating and rated at ninety-nine point nine percent for accessibility, exceeding ADA requirements for municipal websites. Our community of e-newsletter subscribers remains strong by providing quality information each month. We've seen an eleven percent increase in subscribers in the last year and continue to see open rates and click rates that are well above the industry averages. As I mentioned on the last slide, we were successful in quickly creating a secure, interactive, digital public meeting system that has continued into twenty twenty-one. We were able to repurpose some funds that we had secured for a printed newsletter to provide COVID-related communications with a postcard mailing to our older residents in partnership with age-friendly Saco and seniority. We also provided communication support for the meal program and the hotline for resources. We partnered with the Water Resource Recovery Department to support their collaboration with the EPA for their case studies and the launch of the Coastal Resiliency Committee. We're able to do a virtual tour and unveiling of the new Public Works Facility and report in on the status of the voter-approved bond projects from previous years. With the cancellation of parades, we were able to stand up a virtual memorial and Veterans Day ceremony in partnership with the Heart of Bitterford and Saco Police Department. Andrew doubled his video production output in year two with forty-four videos up from twenty during his first year with the organization. During the budget process last year, we requested funds for archive social for record retention. We have these automatic archives set up for the City of Saco Government and Police Pages to ensure we can effectively respond to record requests. We've moved forward with some audiovisual upgrades, moving our cable cast equipment from the third floor to the second floor. We issued a request for proposals to do some additional enhancements to the auditorium. We're planning to use the funds for the projects we were unable to implement this year to support these necessary upgrades and have worked with the Cable Committee to determine the best path forward. We used one hundred and eighty-one thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars of the budgeted cable franchise revenue of two hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars to fund the communications department activities. We're fully funded by the cable franchise revenue and do not expend tax monies to support our efforts. Now, I'd like to discuss a few projects we have planned for the next year. It's time to prepare the website for our next website refresh, which occur every three years to follow best practices. I'll include budgetary items for this project in the next budget process, but this year we'll begin cleaning up obsolete pages and determining unmet needs for planning purposes. We're working with administration and IT to negotiate our cable franchise agreement with Charter. We'll provide updates during our Cable Committee meetings and ask Counselor Purdy to report in during the committee correspondence portion of the meetings and keep you in the loop as this moves forward. We'll continue to collaborate with municipal departments, supported entities, the Saco Schools and other community entities to showcase our great community. And lastly, we're working with the public safety departments to enhance our emergency communication methods. More to come on this at a future meeting. I did propose one service enhancement request for the communications budget, which was supported in the city administrator's budget. This SER does not impact the tax rate because it is funded by the cable franchise fees. We need to replace our playback device. We've worked with Charter to secure some of the funding for this, so we'll not need to expend the entire fifteen thousand dollars you see here. We're interested in purchasing a Castis device for our cable casting equipment. It's the lowest-cost system over time and these devices are used all over New England. There are dozens of users in Massachusetts and locally, we know that the town of Thelmoth purchased one in two thousand and eighteen. We're, we were able to secure eight thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars from Charter for the replacement of the device. So we will not need the entire fifteen thousands, fifteen thousand dollars, as I mentioned before. And this device will help us deliver more content to our local channel outside of the live meetings. And before I move on to human resources, does anybody have any questions about the communications budget?
Director Roy, thank you very much uh for your presentation on the communications budget. Uh, counselors, any questions? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Um, it's not so much a question about this year's budget, but um, so several years ago, I want to say twenty eighteen, I had requested a RAD at the time for um, uh, citizen satisfaction survey and it, it wasn't ever done and it's not something that obviously at that time um, fell into your wheelhouse, but I'm just curious. Uh, in the past, the city had used, uh, I think it was Pan Atlantic research to do a survey and I'm curious as to whether or not you believe uh, you could find it, you know, time this year to do it in-house? And if not, could you get a quote so I could request uh, you know, a sir, as we're calling them now, for this year's budget? Thank you.
Yes, I'd be happy to look into that.
Any other questions, comments for Director Roy? Director, I see no hands raised uh on the communications piece. Please continue on to human resources and fringe benefits.
Thank you. In the human resources department, we also have a team of two supporting our employees with their human resources needs. Kristen Booth, our human resources generalist, and myself as the interim director. Mary Starr is the senior volunteer coordinator. Um, she's been working predominantly in the city clerk's office due to coronavirus restrictions and the impact this has had to our senior volunteer program. We'll plan, plan to review that program with the city council at a future meeting. We've also hired a consultant to help us audit our current practices and provide a recommendation of the future staffing structure for the human resources department. Betsy has significant municipal human resources experience and has already helped us tremendously. For tonight's presentation, I'd like to focus on some of the department's successes, current projects and proposed enhancements. In partnership with our HR consultant, we're in the process of rewriting sixty-eight policies. We plan to reveal our existing non-union personnel policy and employee handbook and replace those with a single comprehensive employee handbook. We are also cross-referencing union contracts to ensure consistency whenever possible. We're in the final stages of reviewing this and it will go to legal before we move it forward to the city council. We hired a temporary employee for a few months to help us with a personnel file reorganization. Gina was able to reorganize all of our current employee personnel files and review our records for compliance. This project is still underway, but she accomplished a lot during her time with us. We're in the process of renegotiating five union contracts that expire at the end of this fiscal year. Kristen Booth, our HR generalist, was able to do open enrollment virtually this year and processed seventy-six new enrollments and changes in the fall. As a team of two, we currently support one hundred and eighty-four full-time employees and over three hundred part-time and seasonal employees. In the main municipal employee health trust billing, some employment statuses were incorrect and participants were accidentally double enrolled. HR Generalist Kristen Booth- HR Generalist Kristin Booth caught these during her review of the bills and recovered $10,000 in credits. We enhanced our employee recognition program this year, recognizing years of service milestones. We did a video compilation that'll be released later this week and gave employees gifts for their dedicated contribution to the organization and community. We recognized 360 collective years of service. Thank you and congratulations to all of our employees who reached milestones in 2020. In addition to the accomplishments I shared in the last slide, we created a monthly newsletter called the Saco Signal. In these newsletters, we feature information regarding wellness, a benefit of the month to educate employees about our lesser-known benefits, employee features to showcase our colleagues, and thumbs-up nominations for Above and Beyond Work. Thank you to Andrew for his newsletter graphic design skills. As I mentioned before, we're in the process of updating our employee handbook. In the current budget allocation, you'll see money in the miscellaneous account. This is earmarked for the wage and compensation analysis. MRI was awarded the RFP, and this project is in process. We'll review our findings in a proposal with the city council this summer. In partnership with Betsy, our HR consultant, we're auditing all of our current practices to ensure compliance, identify opportunities for enhancement, and to provide the best support possible to our employees. We're partnering with our Safety Committee to review the workplace injuries and the impact this has had on the modification rate. You'll see an increase in the fringe benefits section for workers' compensation, and that's due to the fluctuation in the mod rate. We'll work with the Safety Committee to encourage a more safety-conscious workplace. Deputy Fire Chief Martin has done a phenomenal job as a safety tier person and will be providing some additional HR support to him and the committee moving forward. Until we have the staffing recommendations from Betsy, we move forward the existing budget for next year. In FY 2022, we'll focus on standing up some new tools and paychecks to support our first reported injury reporting process and how we hire and onboard new employees. We're also enhancing our training program. We've begun supervisory trainings this past month and will continue to identify training opportunities across the organization. We're looking to expand our wellness initiatives to include employees who are not currently enrolled in the city's health insurance, training related to stress management and body mechanics, and leveraging the use of our employee assistance program, including a partnership with our Public Safety Departments to provide additional support for our first responders. And lastly, we're eager to get the results of the wage and compensation analysis to be able to implement a consistent pay philosophy for our employees to ensure pay equity and competitiveness for positions. Amelia Meyer, our Wellness Coordinator, has been working hard to expand our wellness offerings and increase our grant revenue. Revenue from Maine Municipal Employee Health Trust has been expanded from $6,040 to $9,060 by participating in the Healthy US Scorecard Assessment and the new initiatives that she has planned for this year. We're also looking to expand our wellness programming to include employees who are not enrolled in our health insurance and expanding our gym reimbursement program. Kristin and I will be working with WorkWell to improve our partnership with our occupational health provider. One opportunity we're excited about is the ergonomic assessments to help prevent cases of strain from improper workspace setups. We'll partner with Donruth and Facilities to develop a process for these as new employees join the city and we set up their workspaces. The City of Saco has access to several resources through the Maine Municipal Employee Health Trust, which includes support and programming for employees with diabetes, mental health resources, and an employee assistance program offering counseling, financial and legal advice, and other resources. We'll look to better educate employees about everything available to them through the EAP. The Fringe Benefits Budget accounts for backgrounds in medical testing, retirement, short-term and long-term disability, health insurance, dental optical insurance, tuition reimbursement, workers' compensation, and recruitment expenses. You can see the breakdown of these expenses on the graph. During the budget update, Councillor Hatch asked about the efforts to respond to our increasing workers' compensation costs. I'll speak to these efforts briefly. We're developing return-to-work plans across the organization to address long-term lost time claims. Additionally, we're working with the Safety Committee to adopt some newer practices in our accident review process. We'll also be looking at our training compliance across departments and working with department heads on new training opportunities. I had put forward three service enhancements that were not included in the City Administrator's recommended budget, so I just wanted to walk through those here. I put forward a $12,000 increase in the tuition line to account for the cost of the Police Academy for our patrol officers. The cost is $3,000 per officer. A $5,000 increase in the medical testing line for new officers for polygraphs, physicals, and psychological exams. And a $3,000 increase in recruiting line to enable us to explore alternate platforms and strategies for recruiting new employees across the city as it's proving more and more difficult to find qualified workforce who want to take these municipal jobs. These expenses were not budgeted in the past, so we wanted to make sure that we account for them moving forward. It's important to fund our initiatives for recruiting and onboarding, but also discuss retention strategies. We're hoping to meet with the city council at a future meeting to discuss some retention ideas and strategies to move forward with. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Director Roy. Any questions at this time? Councillor Hatch and then Councillor Johnston. Councillor Hatch?
Emily, thank you for addressing that workers' compensation question for me. It was very helpful, and hopefully, we can find some solutions to that. Can you just expand a little bit on your plans to improve recruitment efforts? Just a general idea of what that's going to include?
Sure. So currently, with what we have budgeted, we advertise using Maine Municipal's platform. They have a job bank, so we use that. We've done some recruitment on social media. We're looking to expand into the job boards for municipal jobs in New Hampshire and Massachusetts as well to see if there are any candidates in the New England region. There are some opportunities for recruitment on LinkedIn. We can do more targeted advertising and sourcing there. And then there's also paid advertising on social media. So we've done the organic advertising for jobs, but we'd like to explore paying for those to boost them a little bit and see what we can get. There are a lot of opportunities with social media to select your audience and target a specific group. So we're looking to expand that, and we'll also want to look at alternate strategies for job boards. We've tried some newspaper advertising for different positions, but we want to be able to adapt our strategy depending on the position we're filling.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Councillor Johnston?
Thank you. My questions around the service enhancement requests. Obviously, those are real costs, so how have we been paying for them to date?
I think Chief Clements will be able to speak to it a little bit more. He had budgeted for portions of these. However, he's been going over on those line items. And by spending all of the money, he has set for tuition on the Police Academy costs, and other employees aren't able to gain access to training after they've been hired. And then the medical testing, so this would free up his medical testing line to be able to account for some of the other medical expenses. If we wanted to explore offsetting co-pays for visits for some of the mental health resources or different things that would be available to officers by accounting for those costs in the fringe benefits line, then we'd be able to free up that money for those other initiatives.
Okay, so the attempt is really just to make this a little bit more transparent and kind of clean it up? All right, thank you.
Any further questions for Director Roy? Director Roy, thank you for your presentations tonight on both Communications, Human Resources, and Fringe Benefits.
Thank you.
Have a great evening. With that, we are up next to item seven, or excuse me, item six, Administration. City Administrator Kenrath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll briefly go over our very short administration presentation. Let me just say first, though, I just want to say something about human resources. This was a department that when I arrived here, I would say was struggling mightily, and I'm happy to report that things are really moving in the right direction. I just want to thank Emily Roy for her efforts there, as well as Betsy Olton, who's done so much for us, as well as Kristin in the department. In a matter of months, this department, I think, is transformed and moving in a completely different direction. I think that's been evident to our staff here, as well as others on the outside. So just a thank you to them for all their efforts, and we're going to continue with this current structure that we have, I think, for a bit of time still, and clean things up and get everything organized, and then move on with how we're going to fill positions permanently. But they've done, just, you know, the three of them, an extraordinary job, and I just want to thank them for getting this department back on the rail. So thank you to everyone involved there. Moving on to Administration, I'll share my screen. So Administration, as you may know, is just a department of two. It's myself, as well as full-time executive assistant Tori Gorman. Some of the obvious major department responsibilities include oversight of the current 13, potentially soon to be 14, different departments. Union negotiations, which, as Emily mentioned, we're working through five CBA negotiations currently right now. Employee Relations and Personnel Matters acts as a liaison between the city council and our city staff. Meet with members of the public and business owners to resolve challenges or answer any questions they may have on an ongoing basis. Council Agenda Management, and putting together all of those documents with Tori and the mayor every week. And as well as so much discussion outreach with support entities, advisory boards, and commissions, and building strong relationships with many other community members is a big part of my daily duties and responsibilities. So in 2021, some achievements. We did lead the city, obviously, through an unprecedented pandemic over the past year, including putting together successful remote work-from-home plans and really figuring out how to take a whole city government operation and move it into a remote status and to ensure continuity of operations. It was an interesting challenge. You know, I probably wouldn't recommend it again in the future, but from an academic standpoint, it was, you know, pretty interesting to go and move through, and we moved through it successfully, and I think, you know, I would hold up what we did here against any of our peers out there. And that's also a testament to our very strong group of department heads and city staff. So thank you to everyone involved there. We have been working along with the mayor and others, SOS Saco Bay, as well as councillors, many others, to further dialogue with the Army Corps of Engineers to see if we can move forward with the Plan Six project, which, as you know, is moving forward with our most recent letter of support. And just in a community outreach effort, I have instituted monthly city administrators' open office hours, where members of the public can come and share their concerns, comments, questions, or anything else they would like to tell me, and those have been great. So our actual budget by the numbers, not much has changed this year. Again, we're a small department, two people. Base pay is the big piece of the pie, followed by City Hall Utilities, which is that next piece, at just under 15%, followed by fees, contracts, and some other smaller pieces of the pie, but no major changes for fiscal year '22. So looking to the next year, we plan to continue working on shoreline mitigation efforts quite strongly, along with the mayor and council, developing additional initiatives to promote a transparent, open, and trustworthy municipal governance. And obviously, a lot of that has to do with community outreach and communication. I hope as pandemic restrictions ease and recede a bit over the coming year, I will be able to personally get out more and more to different areas of the community, whether it's business owners, community groups, neighborhood organizations. And I'm really hoping we have just some more community events back in place. It sounds like we will from Rob Biggs' presentation earlier this evening, so I'm really looking forward to that. And obviously, continuing to build partnerships between local businesses, community groups, and to foster a greater level of cooperation and collaboration with our city government. So that's certainly a small piece of what we will do in the next year, in addition to all of our other duties. So that concludes our brief administration presentation, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, City Administrator Kenrath, for your presentation. Council, any questions? City Administrator Kenrath? City Administrator Kenrath, I see no hands raised, so again, thank you for the presentation. Council, up next, we will hear, you'll see item seven. We will hear from Water Resource Recovery Department, and we'll hear from Director Carter. Director Carter Howard, welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Again, Councillor Hatch, congratulations on your new appointment. Have to have you down for a tour as soon as you get a free moment. And moving right along, okay. Andrew's got control of this. Next screen, please, Andrew. You folks ought to know, in the general public, the Water Resource Recovery Department utilizes an enterprise fund to promote and maintain long-term financial sustainability of its water resources. This fund is a separate accounting and financial reporting mechanism for which revenues and expenditures are segregated with its own financial statements, separate from all other government entities. So basically, what that means is we are not funded by the general fund at all. We have our own revenue source from sewer user fees. And three of the big things that we want to do is protect the health and well-being of all who live, work, and play within the city by conveying all liquid waste from their homes and businesses to the treatment facility for processing. The second thing is protection of one of the city's largest resources, the Saco River. It provides a tremendous recreational value to all citizens and a revenue stream to numerous entities. And finally, and it's a big one, economic and business development. A properly maintained and funded water resource recovery facility is crucial for private investment into Saco, which in turn generates revenue. Some big things this year. Residential sewer connections are up to 4836. That's up from 4774 last year. Our business and commercial entities are up to 388 units from 378 last year. And right now, our current residential sewer charge is average is $381 or $95 per quarter. And our sub-meter abatements are way up this year. Last year at this time, we had about $186,000 in abatements. This year, we're up to already up to $276,000. Our rain was down this year, although our flow is up. So last year, we treated 770 million gallons. This year, we treated 779 million gallons. And a big one is tons of biosolids. It's up from 2081 up from 2029. So what that's telling us is that the city is definitely growing. We've got a lot more people moving in and businesses, which is good, but it's driving up our costs. So some of the big achievements that we did last year was our long-term residency control plan in conjunction with the US EPA. I think Emily touched on that a little bit. We partnered with them because of our sea level rise issue and our backing up of the treatment plant. I think I'll go over that with you, Phil. I know most of the other councils have been down through there. So we looked at a bunch of different alternatives on how to fix that, and the council mayor actually appointed a Coastal Resiliency Committee that was made up of some people from the Conservation Commission, the Harbor Master, and a bunch of businesses. We looked at some different scenarios, and I'll get into that for a minute. We had to repair one of our secondary clarifiers, just aging out. That unit was 35 years old. That was a big expense. And a biosolids holding tank, just due to age and hydrogen sulfide degradation, we had to do a big repair on it. And another big project this year was some of our electronic controls in our pump stations. Our biggest ones are along the Route 1 corridor and Cumberland Avenue. So that was a big expense, but luckily, we're able to update every pump, all our pump stations in a rotation, so it doesn't really affect the budget that much. It's always a rotating type of thing, so... Not much change in the budget. It stays pretty static. Most of our is just base pay and capital, pretty much. We've got a little tick going up, and I'll explain that next page. So based on the current sewer user rate of 496 for 100 cubic feet, on 100 cubic feet, for those of you who don't know, was 748 gallons. We are looking at a 5% increase, which would put the rate at 521. Now, a lot of you folks who've been around for a while know that I try to only go up every other year for the cost index, but this year, we had a couple of big hits. The biggest one is what we call the... The biggest one is what we call the uh is the house connection fee. That's where uh we've decided to repair people's uh house connection from their property line to the middle of the road. In that that sewer break that Leslie talked about earlier at the library, that actually come out of this fund. So we have to fund that with an additional fifty thousand dollars this year. This last year was the biggest hit that we've ever taken into that account. Public Works, uh Director Fox seems to think it has a lot to do with the construction, some of the gas line type things that were run might have had an impact on that, so. Part of that increase is to is to fund that, replenish that uh fund. And also, another big one was those sewer abatements that I told you about. That's up over ninety thousand from last year. Sure, a lot of it's got to do with people being home and doing more watering and gardening and stuff, but another problem that we've been having is people have been waiting for a long time to call in these rebates. You know, we like to have them call them in every year, but we've been getting some three, four, five years old that really impacting this budget. So when we come forward with the ordinance change that you're gonna see in a few weeks once we pass the budget, that's one thing that we want to fix in the ordinance is try to put a limit on how long these people can wait to call in. Next page, please, Andrew. So the big goals for this year is we'd like to move into preliminary design for the long-term control plan for the treatment plant. We have come up with with what alternative we want to do, and I'll talk to you about that later. It's just, we haven't closed it out with the uh coastal residency group yet. That's scheduled for May, so I want to roll that out to them and to you folks. And we want to partner with you guys in how we can best take advantage of the low interest rates going forward, how we're gonna pay for this upgrade. Right now, they're at one percent. I don't know how much longer that those are gonna be around. We're also putting a lot of effort into the sewer grant opportunities at the county, state and federal level, especially hoping that the this administration comes up with some kind of infrastructure funding. We want to be ready for that, what they call shovel-ready. And we'll be updating the uh the sewer ordinance. It's been a number of years since that's been updated, so that's a big priority for us. And the continuing upgrade of existing pump stations. So here we go to the preliminary design of the long-term resiliency plan. Um, we're looking to fund that with, it's gonna be for thirty percent design, it's gonna be just over a million dollars. That'll give us enough to know what the actual cost is. We've got a we've got a cost from them of around an upgrade of around fifty-four million dollars, um but that carries like thirty percent contingency. So if we do decide to go to a bond or continue with funding, we really need to have a full number before we get to November and what that is gonna be. Um, I did talk to the DEP today. They like uh, they like the project. They like the way we're going. They say the engineering fees are right in line, if not lower than what they typically see, so we're happy about that, so. That'll be coming up with you folks this summer. See what we want to do. We do have money already in impact fees that can go for that, and if we want to be ready for November, we almost gonna have to move on this in a few weeks, because there's a lot of people trying to be shovel-ready for the for the infrastructure money that's coming out, so. Next slide, Andrew. That's it. I'm sure there's questions, so. Ready to take it.
Director Carter, thank you very much for the presentation. Counselors, any questions? Director Carter, I don't see any hands raised, so again, thank you for your presentation and thank you for joining us.
All right, you're very welcome. Thanks, folks.
Have a great night.
You too.
With that, we are up to item eight, and that is the police department, I believe, will be joined by Police Chief Jack Clements. Chief Clements, welcome and thank you for joining us.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Let me share my screen. Are you getting the right one?
We cannot see your screen at this point.
Oh, hold on a second. How about now?
We are, we are not seeing your screen.
All right, one more try on this. If not, I'll have Andrew uh help me out, but let me see if I can.
Andrew is ready to share it if needed.
All right, I'm giving it one more shot. Can you see it now?
No.
Oh, all right, my apologies. I'll have Andrew help me out then.
We are now seeing your presentation.
All right, thank you. All right, Andrew, you can go to the uh the first slide, please. So just a couple of numbers to go over um where the police department was. So we had uh over twenty-eight thousand calls for services down a little bit from uh last year. Uh, when COVID hit, things kind of got quiet in town, which was a good thing. Um, we have nine uh emergency communication specialists at Manor Dispatch Center. Uh, this year, we did six thousand four hundred and sixty-six traffic stops. Again, this is down a little bit from last year uh when the pandemic hit. There weren't a lot of people traveling. Uh, with the governor's executive order, there were things like um vehicle registration that was suspended for a little bit, uh inspection stickers, that type of thing, and then really, we wanted to focus on the moving violations instead of some of the smaller things because we wanted to keep our workforce safe. Traffic accidents, those are up, uh even though there was a period when it didn't seem like there was a lot of traffic. Uh, those are up eight percent over last year. Animal control complaints were up uh twenty percent, twenty point four seven, the exact. Uh, parking enforcement with the parking enforcement uh officer, uh even though things were slowed down a little bit, we are um up nineteen percent in the issuance of uh parking tickets, which is now being done through the um electronic up-safety um platform. We're authorized for thirty-seven positions and yeah, compared to last year, we had a zero percent change in the miles that we've driven. Uh, this is just the vision, mission and values uh that I put up on every slide. Uh, the big thing I like to hit on is on our values, which are professionalism, accountability, compassion and trust. This was something that was developed by the workforce. Um, and they've taken a lot of pride in that. Over some achievements for twenty-one, one of the things that we were able to achieve kind of uh when the pandemic hit was we obtained a uh coronavirus emergency supplemental funding grant. Uh, that was thirty-six thousand four hundred and five dollars. We were able to purchase a signboard trailer. We purchased a washer and dryer so that we could um launder contaminated uniforms, so folks didn't have to take them home. Um, the other thing that we were able to purchase is new rain jackets. Um, the police department had never purchased a rain jacket for everybody. They shared them. So now everybody has uh their own rain jacket that's assigned to them. We purchased an ionizer to decontaminate um the workspace vehicles, that type of thing. Um, we also purchased some air air purifiers for the patrol cars. These are miniature forms of what um uh Don Roth got at City Hall, but they they're very small and fit in the car to help clean the air. We're able to purchase a mobile command phone data system that we can use for emergencies, so this can uh be taken out to any scene uh that we need, and we can have phone use and uh internet data right there. And then finally, we purchased a lot of uh PPE. So some of the other things that we did as the pandemic hit and the schools kind of went to shut down. Um, Amanda Condon, one of our school resource officers, was able to come up with a uh a plan to read for the kids. A lot of uh of our employees jumped on that, and we were able to do recorded book readings for the students. This thing actually caught some legs um and went all over the country. We were getting phone calls from California to share more book readings, so that was a really good thing. Um, with the help of uh Don Roth, we were able to go in and and just recently completed some dispatch room upgrades, which was new flooring, paint, and we reconfigured the room, and it's it's much nicer in there. Um, Deputy Chief Huntress was able to get the up-safety parking program uh implemented in conjunction with uh Director Salas. So that now, rather than doing handwritten parking tickets, it's all digital. So if folks go to the beach, um you know, instead of having to go up to the and put coins in, they can do it right on an app on their phone. This is being done in a lot of communities. And um, so I think this is a great thing because now people can use credit cards. Uh, we updated the key card entries and physical security of the building with facilities. We assisted age-friendly Saco with the uh Farms the Table, um helping to uh load food into clothes, I mean, excuse me, into cars. And uh, and then we assisted Saco Parks and Rec with the meal delivery and and phone calls that were done. We've been actively actively been using our reality-based training simulator um that works on deconfliction. Uh, we've got that set up in the basement. Um, we also have um during the year, we won an award. There was a a program that was out there where if you could do a video, um we did a video about some things you were doing in the in the community. This was put out nationally. I can't give enough credit to the Communications Department for Director Roy and Andrew for all the help that they did. There were several videos that were done. Uh, these were very professional. Uh, I thought the Communications Department really knocked it out of the park, and we actually won as a city five thousand dollars. So that money is going towards um some fair and impartial policing training that's gonna be coming up in May. So um, I think that's money well spent for that project. And then finally, I couldn't get it to fit on the screen, but the last thing um is the Pink Pack, Pink Patch Project. So for Breast Cancer Month, in the past, we've done things like Beards for Bucks, and we we always try to pick something where we can um give back to um something in the community. Um, but because of having to be able to wear the N ninety-five mask, we couldn't have beards. So we have to be able to have a seal around our face with a mask, so we came up with, or or one of my officers, um Kyle Gregory came up with the idea to do the Pink Patch Project, which that had never been done in Maine. We did that. That was a huge success. Uh, that was to uh support breast cancer. And we gave a pretty good size check over to the Breast Cancer Center over at Southern Maine Healthcare, and that is something that was so popular. We're gonna continue that next year. Uh, budget overview, uh again, like like other departments, the base pay uh takes up the bulk of it, then overtime, and then most of the operational stuff, vehicles, utilities, that type of thing. So projects and goals coming up for this year, uh obviously is gonna be a recruitment for vacant officer positions. Doing that again in conjunction with uh Director Roy and the Communications Department. Um, they're diligently helping us with uh coming up with new strategies on how to recruit people. Um, and they're very engaged and and their help has been invaluable. Uh, we continue as always with, as police departments do, with policy review, updates and some changes in order to keep up with with changes that are going on across the country and in the state of Maine. Uh, this is gonna be, I, you know, the ongoing implementation of the new parking program. We have some other facilities improvements that we need to look at this year, uh flooring, paint. Uh, the air conditioning system is pretty much done, and we need to start looking at what we're gonna do with um evidence storage. Uh, they they continue to update the retention schedule for these things, and and the evidence is starting to come out. The next thing is uh uh evaluation of parking, the beach. This has been uh done in collaboration with Department of Public Works. Um, and some other city departments were making sure we can maximize the space down there, and and a lot of this goes to the uh Director Fox and his crew down there working with us. We're just trying to make sure we can, we can fit cars safely on the streets down there where they need to be. Next is gonna be uh mitigation of the motor vehicle speed complaints. That is our biggest complaint is driving in the city of Saco, so we have some grants that we have been um utilizing through the um the state, and we are doing that actively. And we have uh folks out there now really working on on the traffic stuff. And then, then of course, the last thing is is ongoing employee training, trying to make sure we keep the workforce um trained. Um, even if it's online, we have some found some online options that have been that have been very good and we're taking advantage of. So some service enhancements and some things on the horizon. So out of the uh city administrative budget, he did approve an increase to um one of our budget lines for fourteen thousand dollars in ammunition costs. Um, if you haven't seen uh in the paper, I I was shocked to see it, but everyone's scooping up the ammunition. I'm not sure what they're scooping it up for, but uh anyway, it's the cost of ammunition's going up, and then with uh the number of people going to the academy, uh we have to supply them with fifteen hundred rounds per person. And then we have two people assigned to the Southern Maine Special Response Team, and there's a certain amount of ammunition that they need for training. In addition, we want to uh up our uh training with firearms. So we're gonna continue to do the one year, once a year um uh qualification, but then we're gonna do uh the other three quarters, we're gonna do training. And at the same time that we do this training, we also cover all of our use force policies uh so that we're touching those four times a year. Um, things that were not supported in the maintenance of upper budget, um I'll uh I'll skip over the first one for a second. So these things that are listed down here, I've been working with the city administrator on on how to how to to tackle these. Uh, the first one is the radio system. The system is about twenty-four, twenty-five years old. If the the in-vehicle radios work fine, but when you get down into certain areas of the city, um, the handheld radios um just can't get out. So we've um been working with uh Dirigo Wireless. We have a a cost on what it'll take to update that system and improve that connectivity with the handheld radios. We're also looking at body worn cameras. Um, initially, we're gonna put that in the capital budget, but again, working with the city administrator um with some money we have left over from vacancies. Uh, I think that's an important thing, especially in today's day and age. Uh, we have cars in the cameras, uh excuse me, cameras in the cars, reverse that. We have cameras in the cars. There's just two other vehicles. We want to get some cameras in, and then I want to have all my folks have body worn cameras. So that uh we're we're capturing everything that's going on out there. Uh, and it's it's really important, I think, to have those. Um, as was touched on, I believe, the building air conditioning, that unit has been here since the building was built. Um, to replace that unit and bring in a brand-new unit and the system that it takes to run it would be about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We're looking at uh instead doing that with the mini splits. Not only does it give us the air conditioning for the building, but it's a backup for the heating system. And then there was some miscellaneous um items, uh cleaning supplies. We wanted to add some money for that, um our dues and memberships. Uh, we have some radar units that are just old, that need to be replaced. Um, tasers, these are things that are electronic and like any other electronic device, they need to be replaced. Um, usually at about a five-year mark, we have some that are eight years old. We'd like to replace those. And then with uh uniforms and safety equipment, as we hire some new folks, we need to get um get them into some uniforms. But again, these are things that I've been talking to the city administrator about, and I think uh working with him will be able to handle that. Um, I think the to come back up to the full-time uh position that was not supported. Um, I, we do have a part-time animal control officer. Um, his calls continue to go up every year. Um, so again, for in in the twenty twenty, it went up twenty point four seven percent increase, and then, of course, there were some ordinance changes that were made. Uh, with those changes, I I foresee nothing but additional calls coming into the animal control officer and only working part-time. I don't feel that we'd be able to keep up um with those calls. And then finally, kind of on the on the horizon thing is in December, the Harbor Master is going to be retiring from his position. So I think at some point, we need to have some conversation about um how we're going to move forward uh with that position. And that is what I have. I'm happy to take it, take any questions um that you may have.
Chief Clements, thank you for your presentation. Uh, quick, council, any questions? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thanks, Chief Clements, for you and all the work that your uh your staff are doing. Really appreciate it. I actually have two questions uh for you. Uh, as as you know, uh from when you tended the Coastal Waters Commission the other night, uh, they're very concerned about the Harbor Master position uh with the vacancy coming up in December. Uh, Saco needs a Harbor Master, Camp Palace needs a Harbor Master, both by state statutes as well as uh for the functioning of the harbor. Uh, I'm wondering if you have any thoughts about that position, uh if it's a good fit for your department, and if it can wait until December to be funded. And my second question is about uh something I've gotten from a constituent about something called an opiate outreach position that apparently we uh share with Bitterford right now, but is not budgeted in your budget for next year. I'm wondering if you can talk more about that also.
Sure, I'll tackle the uh the Harbor Master position first, so the um the Harbor Master position, I I definitely think we need that position. Um, I I think that we need to have that. There's a lot going on down there in the summer. There's a lot to it. Uh, it's not just about being down there. It's the moorings. Um, it's everything. It's everything. Do I think that that should be assigned to the police department? I think that that's a good fit to go under the police department. And then, but when we look at the Harbor Master, it's kind of a two-part process because not only do we deal with that, but then Director Fox deals with, you know, a lot of the maintenance issues down at down at the pier. So I think between the two of us, we can we can manage that. But I think the Harbor Master would be a good fit under my department. As far as the opiate outreach, there is a shared position that was funded through grants between the cities of Biddeford and Saco. And talking to the city of Biddeford, when I talked to the police chief, I believe they are looking for some grant funding. There's a lot of money out there right now, I think, for opiate outreach because of the the issues that you're seeing across the country with overdoses and stuff. So when I talk to the police chief, they are, they're looking at applying for grants. And I know that the city of Biddeford has somebody that does do a lot of that grant work. If that cannot be captured through a grant, I certainly will be having conversations with the police, police chief in Biddeford. And then if it can't be fully funded by that, I'll, I'd be more than happy to come back and talk to the city administrator about next steps.
I see. So the intent is to keep some sort of opiate outreach coordinator. The hope is it'll come through grant funding again in collaboration with Biddeford, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I that's, Biddeford is going to go after some grant funding. And if they can't get that grant funding, then I'll come back and talk to the city administrator about that.
Thank you. Really appreciate that. And just as you and the rest of council know, I've also asked Director Salas to prepare an SCR to fund the Harbor Master position in next year's budget, which I plan to introduce at the appropriate time. So thank you.
Any other questions? If I can answer for you? If there are none, I would like to just say in closing that no, the men and women that work at the Saco Police Department have really done an amazing job this year. They come to work every day through the pandemic, out there in the streets. And they went through it the entire time, and I think they did an amazing job. So I just like to, I guess for me to my workforce, I'd like to say thank you. I think they've done an amazing job for the community. And I just wanted to make sure that I gave them the credit that they definitely deserve.
Thank you, Chief Clements, for your presentation and for those words for all your staff members. With that, I don't see any further hands raised, so thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too.
With that, we are at item nine, which is planning. I believe we're going to have a presentation from City Planner Hamblin. City Administrator Cannonath, are you going to be starting us off?
Mr. Mayor, yes. I will just open with some brief comments on planning and economic development. And then we'll hear from Director Colvet, who will run through the presentation. So just to open it up, as many of you know, except possibly for Councilor Hatch, I don't think we had this conversation yet. One of my, one of my areas of particular interest in reorganization, when I look at city departments, has been in the Planning and Economic Development Department. And with July 1, with the new fiscal year, it's my hope that we can divide the departments to the Department of Planning and the Department of Economic and Community Development. The current department really is made up of sort of two different pieces that in many ways, I believe, have two different missions. I believe by dividing these departments, we'll achieve a number of benefits. Number one is, you know, for, you know, I don't want to speak for this council, but a lot of from what I've heard from you, from the mayor, as well as myself, economic development is really a priority for our city. As we look around, we look at our neighbors, we look at many of the other projects happening out there. We want to compete for anything and everything we can. We want to be on offense, we want to play offense. And we want to utilize our two staff members devoted or could be devoted to economic development fully and really let them, let them run with this. And to to give them less distractions and to have both departments or the new departments really be able to focus on their missions of planning and the economic and community development. The planning side, as you know, is busier than ever. The volume is there. They have been out straight with with the number of new applicants coming in and the projects happening. Also, you'll see in this budget, the creation of a new position of an associate planner in the planning department to help handle some of that workload. But then again, by dividing the departments and allowing Denise and our economic development specialist, Jessa Burna, to focus solely on economic and community development, I think it's really going to do the city a great service in allowing us to really compete in this in this field and do everything we can as far as attracting new projects and promoting smart growth and economic development in our city. So this division really accomplishes that. I think it takes away also some of the, you know, the the missions that I think are really quite different sometimes between playing and between economic development. So that is the the one area of reorganization I would like to see in the coming year budget for July 1. So my hope is that beginning July 1, you will see a new Department of Economic and Community Development, a Department of Planning. And I think we will be set for even better success with both of these departments with that division. So with that, those are my sort of opening remarks. You know, as I said, I think I've talked with, you know, most of you and most of you are well aware of this initiative at this point, but happy to have further conversations on that. I mean, further questions or concerns to come up. But at this point, I'll turn it over to Denise to run through her presentations. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you for explaining the change, the proposed change. I'm in agreement with this change, although I have to tell you, by putting both departments together when it first arrived was a great way to fuse and to increase the communication between the two departments. And so it's had a really, really great, great success in that regard. It's opened up the dialogue. We created a Planning and Development Review Committee, an interdepartmental approach to projects before they got to the planning board. And that served a major, major contribution toward where we are today. Thank you, Brian, for your opening comments. Thank you, Mayor Doyle, and city council members, as well as welcome Counselor Hatch. And I want to start before the presentation is, I want to thank our Economic Development Commission. Without their support, their wisdom, their guidance, we wouldn't be where we are today. And I also want to thank the Communications Department for the increased photography, increased communications and presence. And I also want to thank our team of Jessa Burna, who's our Economic Development Specialist, Isabel Exley, who serves as our Economic Development Associate and Planning Associate. And I'd like to welcome back Bob Hamblin, who's our, he came out of hiding, or retirement, as other people would say it. So thank you, everybody. Run through the slides. One of the things I wanted to do is to just share that with you that we do tie in with the city council goals. Growth and innovation, quality service, financial stability, transportation transit, transparency and engagement, and livable community. So the proposed change is moving forward, economic and community development, reinvigorate our business outreach and visitation, do more extensive retention and expansion efforts, work more concertedly and a concerted press effort on business attraction, community development grants, and that's not just with community development-type grants, that's grants for all departments, every entity in the city of Saco, helping out nonprofits as well. And of course, our ongoing business support. Planning, the focus areas would be streamlining development review process, implementing the new zoning ordinance, and working and finalizing the comprehensive plan 2021 update. So highlights, right now, I could list everything. I could have done the metrics. It's hard to do metrics with both of our departments. But I want to highlight the larger projects, Dock and Door, 15,000 square feet of new office space and warehouse space. PM Construction raising the site, constructing a new two-story, 20,000-square-foot professional office building. 110 Main Street, 12 new units, 146 Main, 12 new units, 107 Beach, six, and 224 North, three new duplexes for an addition of six units. And those are the bigger projects. Our achievements, we had many, but I picked the higher ones. Managed the sale of the former Public Works Building. I keep touting that we didn't use a broker, so we saved the city about $380,000 worth of broker fees. We initiated our business outreach and visitation program, which in essence started off pretty well, but came to a COVID halt. We're going to be reinstating that in June. We created a Transit-Oriented TIP District. The council approved and has now officially been approved at the state, so that's ready to go. We initiated, as Rob Biggs talked about this evening, the Downtown Pissag Grant Program and the COVID-19 Emergency Loan Fund. That gave about $200,000 worth of emergency loans to businesses here in Saco. And they had a six-month forgiveness and the payments started. And so they're starting to come in and people have been very appreciative. Should these businesses still be in existence in five years? Then the incentive was that 50% of that loan was going to be forgiven. So people that would have otherwise had challenging opportunities or challenging times, they were able to make avail of this product, and it was a $10,000 loan maximum. We completed the market analysis to which we are going to design an implementation strategy for attracting our businesses and actually knocking on doors, cold calling existing businesses and saying, you know, you may want to consider an expansion when the time is right, and trying to invite people to look into grant opportunities to do that sort of thing. We did institute with the help of the council, a restaurant outdoor seating policy to expand businesses' dining experiences here in Saco. Jessa managed the Keep Healthy Made, Keep Made Healthy Program, where the town received 116, the city received $116,000. We began the comprehensive plan and program. Sorry, the photos are blocking my slide here. And then we established the Long Range Planning Committee as well. The zoning revision, zoning ordinance revision has been completed. We're in the process of working through some amendments. The multimodal bridge concept plan has been completed. And we're in the process of looking to grants to fund the next phases. And the Historic Presentation Commission, Isabel, was very instrumental in gaining some grant money for their projects. The budget you'll see is really, I think if you look at the budget book, it's it's actually a savings by breaking it off and putting it into economic development through the TIPS. So savings to the city of about $28,663, and that includes adding a full-time assistant planner. So and everything else pretty much remains the same. And for those of you, you'll always see this dollar bill every year. I do a budget presentation, the numbers change. But for every new dollar of tax growth in the city, 49% is shifted over for state and county government, 42% to the state aid to education, county taxes go up 2%, state revenue sharing 5%, 51% of the new dollar stays here in Saco. So I behoove Saco, and Saco was the first city slash community in the state of Maine that actually utilized the TIP program when the legislation first came through. Industrial Park was the first TIP district in the state. And you have gone miles ahead with with all the the TIP districts here in Saco. So as we go through the numbers real quickly, you'll see the detailed numbers, obviously, in your budget book. I summated it in in like a program element because some of the funding comes up from different accounts for varying reasons. I started first and foremost with the Economic Community Development Office. That's Jessa's and my salary and operations is $225,000. The economic development salaries that are prorated, which is prorated administration, which is Brian's salary, proration of finance director and deputy, proration of of the planner and the assistant planner, and the assessing department comes out to 170,362. So those two chunks come out of, are not funded by the general fund anymore. The sewer bond payment was a couple, three years ago, we pulled that out of the general fund and paid that out of the TIP budget. And then now we're beginning to earmark for upgrades. So eventually that'll help pay for your bonds for the for the sewers. So earmarking 400,000. Roads bond payment, again, a prorated portion was pulled out of the general fund budget a couple, three years ago. We're back at 110,000. Transit was pulled out of the general fund a couple years ago as well, and we're funding that entire amount of 200,000. Downtown Streetscapes, you heard Rob Biggs talked about planters and what have you. Who else is going to be doing benches, trash receptacles, a project that Pat Fox and other folks in Ryan's summer are going to be involved with. Also in the request is 150,000 to do Diamond Park Boat Ramp Trails and Amenities. And I have my fancy little arrows, checkmarks. Sidewalks along Route 1 in the Park North area, that is some of the commitments that we made to improving some of the existing areas that don't have sidewalks. A few years ago, we started putting money aside for a parking garage, which may or may never happen. So we're shifting that to public parking. So if we need to do a public parking, private, public, private partnership, we'll have funding toward that. Saco Main Street used to be out of the general fund. It is now funded at $100,000 a year and funded out of the downtown district. The downtown business grant program that's opening for any of our business grants for retention and expansion. Earmarking some money toward the grant match to look at the next steps for our Bike Ped Bridge in Saco. Projects and loans, and those are citywide, they're lumped from different accounts. Camp Ellis hoist replacement for 29,598, legal fees of 10,000. Again, Biddeford, Saco Chamber dues and Southern Maine Finance Agency were pulled out of the general fund funding and put into TIPS. Again, not to go over this again, but those are the goals. So one of the things I wanted to talk about here, right at the end here, just to give you a quick benchmark, we have worked in the past year with over 100 businesses and projects. Partnerships, we are currently working very avidly with 15 inquiries ranging from health services, wanted to locate here in Saco, manufacturing, a national company with warehouses in other countries. Everything from 3,500 square feet to 60,000 square feet plus. Employee ranging, employee numbers ranging from eight employees to over 100. And I think that's pretty commendable for a community this size. I think putting the Route 1 sewer extension project has really helped the brokers, commercial brokers in in putting some real teeth into the viability of that property that's for sale along Route 1. And we're pretty excited about what the next year will bring us. Between the opportunity zone, we are now also part of a foreign trade zone. It's very exciting for manufacturing to take a look at at Route 1 and expand there. So I will, with that, I'll stop sharing my screen and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director Clavett, for your presentation. Counsel, any questions for Director Clavett? Counselor Johnston?
Not a question, it's more of a statement again. For several years, I've said this, and it's not really criticism of city staff or anybody. It's really a council policy decision. But, you know, taking these salaries and wages out of the TIP districts, I mean, I view that as rather not transparent. I mean, these are real costs, they're real operating costs of a municipality. And when you put them into a TIP district and hide them from the general public, I mean, when I look at, we'll just say the city administrators salary, for example, it appears as a little over $100,000 in the budget, but in reality, it's more than that because you would have to know to go look, you know, into the TIP budgets to find where these actual salaries are. I don't support that. So I'll say it again. I mean, you're talking about over $400,000 that are, again, being taken from TIPS when they really belong in the general fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Any further questions for Director Clavett? Director Clavett, I don't see any further hands raised. Thank you for your presentation and thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. With that, that brings us to item 11, which is the Department of Code Enforcement, and we welcome our Director Toomey.
Good evening. Let's see if I can do this. This is my first budget presentation. If I can't do this, I will, that's for help.
You're sharing your screen.
Yeah, okay. Basically, let's go to the next one. This is what we do in the code enforcement. Multifamily dwellings went to zero because of COVID. We were not allowed in people's homes. But our onsite inspections increased by more than 400, which made up for the 120 multifamilies that we didn't do. Our billing permits went up about 50, which was an all-time record. And we're about 50 ahead of that pace this year already. Our totals income Our totals income coming in went down slightly because more of the permits were residential. Complaints are down probably thirty or so because people are evicted from their apartments because of COVID. So that's where a lot of our complaints come in. So we didn't, we had less interactions also on complaints. We are down one staff member who left in October, and she was the one that was doing our multi-family. Which hope to fill later in the year when we start that program up. Planning reviews went up because our permits went up. So we have been quite busy, even though COVID hit, the economy and building sector has been booming, so. And the planning is busy. So if they're busy, that means we're busy in the future also. So our achievements, despite the COVID, we maintained our level of service. Because construction heavy took off, we basically conducted all inspections in person. Other towns did them by video. We didn't miss a single inspection that we were asked to do. We never got anyone sick, so we were very lucky in that, but we did all our inspections. As I said before, we issued a record number of building permits and we're still on pace to do more than that. And we remain open. We came here every day. We did our inspections every day. Other towns closed up and basically waited till they reopen to do inspections. So we were one of the few communities that was business as usual every day. We also had some turnover in this department, since this is my first budget presentation. My former boss Dick Lambert was here for thirty five years, so he did it before that. So during his leaving and the other person leaving a month later, we were short staff for three to four months, which is a small department, so it's quite a amount of shortage, but we kept up our level of service during all that time. Luckily, it was going towards a slower part of the year. If Dick had retired in the summer, it would have strung, strung him up, but thankfully he waited till late fall. Our budget is pretty stable. It doesn't change much. Most of it's our salary, less to just office supplies. So it's not going to change much. I'm not asking for anything different from last year. And our projected goals is we will want to try to restart the MDU inspections. Hopefully in the fall, we'll, depending on COVID, but we're thinking, hoping that everything will be fine. We can do that. We want to continue expanding interdepartmental communications. We've tied in all the other departments on what we do, so everybody's on board for when we issue permits. So they'll know if there's impact fees for them that they do, if there's street opening permits. What we do interacts with so many other departments, we're expanding that communication. And thanks to Emily Prescott Cole over Wastewater, we are working with one of our softwares to do a flow chart. So whenever we issue something, it will go out to all other departments. So everybody's on the same page. Also with her help, we're moving forward to the next level with online permit application, the software. That way more and more people will be applying online. That way we'll have less people come in the office and that'll be a thing of the future. So we're going further with that. Since we have a small staff and we have a lot of work, we're trying to explore ways to be more efficient. Of course, the online permit is part of that, but we're looking at other avenues, avenues to try to be more efficient, so we, our level of service doesn't go down. And like I said, we're not asking for any service enhancement. So that is pretty much it for me, if you have any questions.
Director Toomey, thank you very much for your presentation. Counsel, questions for Director Toomey? Director Toomey, I don't see any hands raised, so thank you again for joining us and thank you again for your presentation.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You too.
But with that, counsel, we are at item ten of the agenda, new business. I would like to take a five minute recess. A five minute recess, so if we can be back by nine, ten, that would be appreciated. Thank you, everyone, for that. We are back at nine eleven. To hear new business. First up is item A, Chapter one eighteen, update city administrator, Canra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you'll see from the item commentary, we have some updates, proposals from the Coastal Waters Commission. Just in short, basically the first is moving from November to December when recreational boats have to be out of the water. This is basically to make the harbor master's life a little bit easier, who has to monitor these vessels that are still in the water after that date. And the second one governs the courtesy moorings. They are overnight courtesy moorings, and obviously we have some people that abuse those privileges and leave boats on those moorings for much longer than overnight. So it would place more limits and further some, some oversight and enforcement in that area also. Mr. Mayor, I think we may have Coastal Waters Chair Jim Katz or Harbor Master Dan Chadbourne also available for any questions or if they want to offer any comments on this also.
Welcome Chairman Katz and Harbor Master Chadbourne.
Hi, everybody.
Dan, thank you for joining us. I think we're just trying to get
Yeah. Are you hearing me now, Dan?
Chairman Katz, we can hear you now.
Thank you. I'd like to turn this over to Dan Chadbourne, the Harbor Master. He can speak to the issue of these two changes to Chapter one eighteen. Dan, why don't you go ahead and do that for us?
Okay, the first issue is the changing the, the date that the recreational boat uses to remove their boats and remove their moorings from the river from December first to November first. Most of the recreational boats are done recreating about September fifteenth. And so what happens is it just becomes a storage place for these boats. It's not a good place to store your boat on the mooring. In the fall, we have, as you know, we have nor'easters. It gets to be a problem. You gotta, you, you call people, you warn them about the storms, you gotta coordinate moving them up and down the river. They, they just need to haul the boats out. There's no reason for them to be in from November to December. There's no issues with getting a boat hauler in between September fifteenth and November first. That's what they do for a living. They make themselves available. It's a pretty, pretty simple thing. The second thing is the charter boat moorings. I mean, the courtesy moorings. So the biggest issue is we have, our river is governed by federal, state and local law. And we have these courtesy moorings and therefore a courtesy up to forty eight hours. And then if you're in it, you know, if you have a breakdown or there's something going on with your mooring or, you know, we work out the details. It's not a big deal. The, the problems that we're having is it's, it's kind of the whole day and age where people just say, well, it's a courtesy. I'm gonna stay there all summer. Or it's a courtesy in the fall, they, they bring their boat and store it in Camp Ellis on a courtesy mooring until I can figure out whose boat it is and, you know, tell them to get it out of there. It's it's becoming a bigger and bigger problem. The courtesy moorings are we have a lot of transient boats that go by the end of Wood Island, and the idea was to bring them into Saco and get them to spend some money here. It, it works to a certain extent, you know, I give them the whole spiel about Hewitts and, and the trolleys and you know, they come in overnight and they can go to Saco and New Litchfield Beach and all that kind of business and, you know, tell them to spend some money while you're here. I just need to, we need something in our ordinance. See how I can explain this. So our police department is on the river part of the year. The main marine patrol is on the river the rest of the year. If we put something in our ordinance that says they have forty eight hours, they can be on a morning for forty eight hours and, and longer with permission, and then if they don't have permission, they have to leave. If our police department isn't on the river, I can get the main marine patrol to either write them a ticket or chase them out of there. The marine patrol will enforce our ordinance. So that's kind of where we're at. The idea is to put something in our ordinance that both local and state enforcement officers can deal with. So that's it.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions for the Harbor Master? Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan, with the transient, with the twenty, forty eight hour moorings, is, do they have to register? Or they just go to you and get permission, so you have no tracking of who is moored there?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just wondering if there was, if it was a way that somebody had to register. So that way we would have their contact information.
Well, the way I do it right now is a lot of people, a lot of people have been coming here for years. So I recognize the boats. Some of the newer people, I'll get an email or, or they'll come in to the Saco River because we're in a, a number of, of I don't know what to call them. They're, they're like a a transient boulders magazine, US Harbors lists us, you know, places like that list us as a transient spot. A lot of, a lot of boats can't come up the river because of their deep draft. They have a deep draft keel, so I refer them to the Anchorage over in over by Bitterford Pool, Wood Island Harbor. So we're just it's basically directing traffic. In the summertime, I, I go haul my traps, I haul a hundred traps, I check my phone, I deal with all the people that are coming and going. And then I finish my day and deal with the rest of the people that are coming and going. So that's kind of how it works.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan, I was reviewing this packet. I don't see anything related to fines for violators. Would you also recommend that we build in fines? The amount, I don't know at this time. But for the offenders that stay longer?
You could do something like that. I would just say, you know, Jack Clement would I, I think that you can do something with like violation of the city ordinance or something along those lines. I just want to be able to get them off the moorings. At least have some kind of threat.
Understood.
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Mayor, answer that.
Mr. Katz?
Yes. In, in the regulation, the proposal is that any boat remaining on the mooring in violation of this section shall be subject to removal by the authority of the Harbor Master with a cost being assessed against the owner. In addition, any violation of this section shall subject the boat owner to a fine of a hundred dollars per day or two dollars a foot. Whether, whatever is the greater. So there is a, Counselor Archer, there is a fine entailed with more than forty eight hours without permission.
Could you bring up the statute? I'm not on the page looking specifically for it.
Okay, we're talking about Chapter one eighteen, Section one eighteen dash five. And that's a letter, we're adding a new letter, a letter K, courtesy moorings provided by the city of Saco. I believe that Administrator Kenra has that in your, in your packet somewhere.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for, I think.
Okay.
I didn't oversee it. It is many pages, as you know.
It's a new item added to Chapter one eighteen at letter K.
Perfect. Thank you. I did find it.
Okay.
Any other questions from counsel? Counselor Berman, are you okay with being the counsel liaison for this?
Yeah, I think it's necessary. Appreciate it.
Okay, we will see this at a future council meeting. Chairman Katz, Harbor Master Chadbourne, thank you for joining us this evening. It seems there's no further questions.
Thank you for your consideration.
Have a great evening.
Okay.
Okay, that brings us to new business, item B, and New County Road Zone Change Request. And I believe we'll hear from City Planner Hamlin.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm currently working right now to try to line up Bob Hamlin to join us. He is actually at the planning board meeting, which is happening concurrently tonight because we are on Tuesday night. So Bob should be joining us hopefully momentarily. But he is at planning board right now. So I don't know how you'd like to proceed. We could open it up and have a reading of the item commentary for some background, or it's it's up to you, but Bob should be here hopefully soon, but I'll keep you up to.
So counsel, the background on this is applicants John and Linda Fenderson are asking zoning are asking that the zoning of their property, West Residential, be changed to rural conservation. The Fendersons own and live on the property at ninety-seven Old County Road and run a small farm in operation with livestock and crops. This item was reviewed by the planning board at its March thirty meeting, and I think Bob Hamlin is being promoted right now so he can answer any questions related to that March thirtieth meeting, but they did forward a positive recommendation to the council. City Planner Hamlin, thank you for doing double duty and presenting and here tonight on this matter.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Glad to be here. We're on the New County Road rezoning issue?
We are.
Okay. Well, if nothing has been said to date, this is fairly straightforward. Initially, this request was put forth by the Fendersons at, I believe, ninety-seven New County Road. I've, I've only been in town for twenty years. Those of you who have been here for much longer are probably aware that the Fendersons have been out there probably for as long as you can remember and and much longer than that, too. It has come to the Fendersons' awareness that they are currently in what's called the West Residential or WR Zone. They are aware that their their property is located fairly close to the Rural Conservation Zone, the RC. And we're speaking all relatively new zoning designations here as as to the recent update of both the zoning map and the zoning ordinance. So the Fendersons have been approached by a company that specializes in commercial-scale solar installations. Upon checking the zoning ordinance, they are aware that you can't do it in the West Residential Zone, in which they are currently. You can do it as a conditional use in the Rural Conservation Zone. So that was enough for them to say, well, let's approach the city and ask if our property might be rezoned. Their neighbors immediately to the west and abutting the Fendersons are the Pattersons. Much the same story. That family has been on that property for decades and generations. The Pattersons' properties, and there are two, they have a parcel both north of New County Road and south of New County Road, both fronting on New County Road. Actually, abut the zoning boundary between West Residential and Rural Conservation. The Pattersons are equally interested in this rezoning. They would prefer to go to the Rural Conservation. Their explanation is a little bit different. They're not pursuing solar, but they recognize that agriculture with no restrictions is possible in the Rural Conservation Zone. Primarily, that means that they can practice agriculture, but they can also keep livestock. Just a few hundred feet to the east of them, in the West Residential Zone, you may practice agriculture, but you may not keep livestock. And that makes a real difference for them. I believe they do keep livestock currently, and they would like to continue doing that. So they have a valid reason, too, for this rezoning. The planning board took a look at this a few meetings back, heard from both the Pattersons and Fendersons. Both parties explained themselves very well. Held a public hearing, arrived at the, at a positive recommendation for the rezoning. They did ask the staff communicate with a couple of nearby property owners, specifically, if you're looking at the zoning map, there are a couple of smaller lots that it's pretty, pretty easy to pick out. They front on New County Road. It's clear that back along, perhaps several years ago, these lots may have been carved out of the much larger Fenderson parcel. So we have talked with one, and I'm sorry, I don't have that map in front of me. Is it Cody? And I forget the the name of the folks who are there, but one individual has responded to us. She likes the West Residential zoning just fine, and she would like her property to be left as it is. Then there's a gentleman, Mr. Gomond, right next door. Mr. Gomond and I have traded a couple of phone calls. We have sent him some materials through the mail, but at this point, we haven't had a final answer on whether he prefers to be left in West Residential or perhaps to join his neighbors, the Fendersons, in being rezoned to rural conservation. So that's three and a half mouthfuls right there. I I hope that was fairly clear. Hopefully, with graphics that are included in your packets, the pictures tell the story somewhat, too. If I can answer any questions, I'd be glad to.
Thank you, Planner Hamlin. Counsel, any questions? Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Offline, is it possible for me to get that contact information for the Gomonds? I'd like to try to educate and outreach them as well, just to give that one extra attempt to, before we do any changes.
Absolutely. We have phone numbers and we have an email address as well, and I think if Mr. Gomond and I keep at it, we will eventually connect. But I would be happy to pass that on, Counselor Archer.
Yes, if you could just email me, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Be glad to.
Any other questions for Planner Hamlin? Planner Hamlin, thank you very much for joining us this evening and and we'll let you get back to the planning board meeting.
Oh, I've said my apologies. I'm here for the next item, too, if need be.
Okay, all right. So counsel, New County Road, Counsel Archer, are you okay with being the resource on that?
Yes, please do. Thank you.
Okay, you'll see this at a upcoming council meeting. We move on to item C of new business. And that is proposed conveyance of city property, Millbrook Business Park. City Planner Hamlin, do you want to give us a a brief overview of what this is?
I'd be glad to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those who might be familiar with the Mill, Millbrook Business Park may know that if they follow Millbrook Road to its terminus, it it ends in a cul-de-sac. Off the cul-de-sac is a roughly seventy-foot-wide strip of land owned by the city, and it goes straight back. Those who perhaps used the Eastern Trail may have gotten on the trail here. This strip of land also provides access to what is both the Unitil Natural Gas Corridor and also this particular section of the corridor is owned by Main Water Company. So it's a, it's a valuable little access for those reasons. The adjacent property within Millbrook, it's shown as Lot seven on the Millbrook subdivision plan, is owned by a George Kerr-owned company. There is one building that's been completed and is occupied. There are a couple of other buildings that are in various stages. Each has been approved. One is actually beginning construction currently. In reviewing the site plan for for the Phase Two development, the city engineer picked up on the survey showing that an electrical transformer had inadvertently been installed, wouldn't you know it, right on the property line between the the city's strip of land and Mr. Kerr's property. The city engineer made clear that for liability issues, if nothing else, this should be rectified. Two options came to mind. One, fairly costly to Mr. Kerr, and that would be to have the transformer moved. The second was, well, if the lot line were just tweaked and, say, moved over five feet, then that would be a less costly option, and this was proposed, put in front of the planning board. The board felt felt justified in sending a positive recommendation that, in fact, that lot line could be adjusted by five feet. The real estate involved was about seventeen hundred square feet. That would be conveyed from city to Mr. Kerr to to cure the issue. We've had the assessors take a look at this. It was suggested that this would impact Mr. Kerr's taxes to the tune of a couple of hundred dollars a year. So the feeling on staff's part is, yes, we are asking the city to to convey real estate to a private party so as to correct an error that either he made or one of his subcontractors made. But staff also feels justified in saying, given the circumstances and given Mr. Kerr's continued development on the adjacent lot, which is, after all, going to result in increased taxes to the city, that staff could support this adjustment to the lot line and the proposed conveyance of the seventeen hundred square feet. Once again, I hope that's halfway clear, and if I can answer questions, I'd be glad to.
Thank you, City Planner Hamlin. Counselor Hatch?
Hi, Bob. Just just a question. I clearly understand the the issue here. I'm just curious as to the costs associated with this. Are they going to be borne by Mr. Kerr? You got legal fees, you got drafting of documents. I'm not sure they're going to be significant, but I would think that in all fairness, it was his agent that created the problem that he should likely pay for anything that, any costs associated with this. Is that the plan?
It certainly is, and I apologize for not pointing that out. Good question. Yes. The city has reached out to Goral Palmer, an engineering firm. They're the ones who created the plan, a copy of which I think is in your packets this evening. Yes, those costs were borne by Mr. Kerr. The city engineer has drafted the quitclaim deed, a draft of which is in your packets, and absolutely, the cost for Mr. Murphy's time will be borne by Mr. Kerr.
Great. Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. It's, you know, obviously, seems straightforward, and fortunately, we have ample amount of land here with this maintenance access, but the question I have is, you know, we've had other occurrences in the past with, in subdivisions where, you know, a sign ends up on the city's property, and I guess I'm just curious. I mean, obviously, you weren't there and and a contractor didn't cite this correctly, but is there a process for when they go about doing it? Do they come in to code and pull a permit for like the electrical unit that was placed there? I just, my concern is, you know, going forward that, you know, we we have an example now where in the future, maybe it's even further encroached, and we have a larger issue, and I'd just like to avoid this altogether in the future. So maybe there's some, some, you know, policy we can put in place to better avoid this.
I feel you make a good point. Certainly, an electrical permit would have been required prior to any work being done out there of an electrical nature. And I don't have a good explanation as to details, Counselor Johnston. You know, is this something that a city staff member could have, should have picked up on before the installation ever took place? Possibly, but I well, I I can't and don't want to point fingers, and I can't really assign responsibility for this installation. I I don't know if it was purely on a private contractor's part, purely on city staff's part, or somewhere in between.
Well, let me ask this. Do we locate pins? I mean, this is obviously a city subdivision. Did we locate the pins and locations? So that contractor probably should have had a good idea where, you know, the lot lines were?
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thanks. I'm sorry if this is a dumb question, but how big is the transformer and the transformer pad? And is there a reason why we're conveying a whole strip of land and not just the land underneath the transformer pad?
Transformer pad and actual transformer? I'm gonna say certainly no larger than six by, six feet by six feet. And then in terms of why the why that length of a strip of conveyance, that's, that's a reasonable point. Certainly, there could have been a much smaller jog and literally gone around the transformer, jogged back in and continued on. Could this have been reduced to thirty square feet, forty square feet, something like that? I would, in in my opinion, yes.
Is there a reason not to that I don't understand?
None that I'm aware. A couple of things come to mind, but probably what really comes to mind for me, Counselor, is simply by adjusting that length of the property line, it provided for some continuity, so there is a a single straight line rather than that little, little jog that I alluded to. Beyond that, I I got nothing for you. That's the only reasoning that I can see.
Okay, thank you.
But if if the council would like that to be explored and reduce this potential conveyance to, again, even a couple of hundred square feet, that's, that's a fifteen hundred square foot reduction.
I would appreciate if you could explore that option and bring it to us when it comes back as a, for the first reading.
I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Sure.
Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also do, I'm in agreement with Counselor Burnham. When we're giving away land or giving away rights, no matter how small, it's always best to do the least amount possible to meet the need. And that's how I look at this, because once you give away the rights, it's hard to get them back. So I'd like to see this this smallest blueprint, footprint possible. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments for Planner Hamlin? Counselor Gunn, you're the suggested counsel liaison. Are you willing? council liaison. Are you willing to make the motion?
Of course, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, with that, that concludes new business. We are on to administrative updates. City Administrator Kenrath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple, uh, brief updates. First, an RFP announcement. The city of Saco uh, seeks proposals from qualified vendors to design, develop and install upgraded audio, visual uh, and sound system equipment in the Saco City Council chambers. Proposals will be accepted until April twenty-ninth at twelve noon uh, by email to eroy@saco main.org. Proposals must include responses to all requirements contained within this RFP in a PDF labeled, uh, City Council Audio. Any questions regarding the project or specifications should be directed to Emily Roy, Director of Communications, um, via email or by calling, uh, two oh seven seven one zero five zero zero two. Again, that's open until April twenty-ninth. Uh, just, uh, again, a thank you on our senior meals, uh, programs. On April first, we did over at our last event, we did over two hundred and fifty meals again, so thank you to our Parks and Rec Department, volunteers and sponsors there. Our next event will be coming up on May thirteenth at the community center with more details on menu, et cetera. Um, I'll have probably, uh, our next meeting next week. Uh, I'd also just like to take a moment again, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we were able to uh, recognize and congratulate Amelia Meyer in our Parks Department for her winning the Dr. Bill Eckert Young Professionals Award. This award is given to, uh, those in the Parks and Rec industry with less than ten years of experience to recognize outstanding achievement and rising stars in the field, and Amelia Meyer was the winner. So uh, we were able to recognize her a couple of weeks ago in the council chambers, and I think we did a video. Uh, so again, congrats to Amelia, um, for all her hard work and she's just been instrumental in the senior meals program uh, since the last year with its inception. So, um, thank you and congratulations to Amelia Meyer. Um, also just want to take a moment to thank, uh, SOS Saco Bay for their involvement in, uh, putting together another successful symposium a few weeks ago. Uh, the event was well attended, featured a good program of interesting speakers and served in keeping this issue at the forefront um, as we continue with our efforts with the Army Corps of Engineers. So I look forward to continuing to work with um, all of those involved parties, uh, in the future mitigate uh, our shoreline erosion, uh, issues and to help our beachfront communities. So thank you to especially David Plavon and Kevin Roach and everyone at SOS Saco Bay for, uh, their success here and another, uh, great symposium. Um, lastly, I just wanted to touch on earlier this evening, we talked about our, uh, dramatic increase over the last number of years in our workers' comp uh, expenses. Uh, I just wanted to add also, we had a meeting just today with the Safety Committee. Um, and we're looking at ways to really, um, further buttress and support our safety program. So, uh, one other element is we're going to be adding, uh, safety subcommittees by department. They're going to get on a more granular in the, at level in the departments, um, in promoting uh, safety requirements and just that sort of cultural awareness. Then we'll report back to the larger Safety Committee. Uh, this was recommended by Municipal Association where we do our workers' comp business um, to try to get, uh, some of those numbers down. So we're actively on this issue. Uh, we have seen an increase and it's our goal to, to take every effort possible to drive down those numbers as much as we can. And a lot of that is just, um, beginning with uh, safety awareness and ensuring that safety compliance, uh, is happening, especially in our police, public works, uh, and fire departments, which were the top three departments driving our increases. So uh, we're on that. We had that meeting just today and I wanted to add that piece, but I'll keep you in the loop with further updates, uh, in the future. That's all I have. Have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Kenrath. Any questions? Moving on to item twelve, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment this evening? Moving on, there is no executive. Counselor McPhail? Or Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to welcome our newest counselor, uh, Phil Hatch and congratulate him on surviving his first meeting. Well done.
Uh, thank you very much, Mike. Uh, and I'm happy to be serving with all of you, so thank you for welcoming me as you have.
Any other further council discussion and comment? Uh, there's no executive session tonight, so with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Purdy. Uh, discussion on adjournment? Roll call, vote? Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to adjourn the meeting at nine forty-six P.M. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great evening. Be well and stay safe.